All right, we're going to call to order the December 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment's Excessor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Commissioner Alex Hirsch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of existing litigation, Universal Limousine versus the City of West Sacramento, and to discuss one matter of substantial exposure to litigation, and no action was taken. Also to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Fighters Association and the West Sacramento Police Officers Association, and no action was taken. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action under items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the entry door, and turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a analog flip chart that simply indicates which agenda item a council is currently considering. We recognize that for some folks speaking in public can cause anxiety and other ailments, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or tomatoes, or actually even any applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. The yellow cards, the speaking request cards, the clerk takes those cards up until the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report is done and the council questions or the public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so just the sooner you get your card in, the better, but certainly by the conclusion of the staff report on any one particular item. Right, with that, we have one request to speak under Item 1A, and it's by Ignacio Rivera.
My name is Ignacio Rivera, and I own several properties on Fourth and D Streets, and I still live on D Street, I've been there since 1950. And I want to build a new duplex on the corner of Fourth and D. And I'm trying to obtain a permit for two water inch, two-inch water line from the main street water line. There used to be a two-story house there owned by Judge Benetti, and he tore it down, and I used to live across the street, and my dad, my father and I converted that into a garden, and there was running water, because we connected the water, hosted water to garden. Now, since I'm in the process of building this new duplex, the city engineers went there, they took pictures of existing sewer line, the old existing gas line, but they couldn't find a water line. So what I'm saying is, I'm willing to pay the difference between a two-inch and a one-inch, but they want me to pay the whole fee for completely a two-inch connection. Now, I'm not a speculator, I've been there since 1950, all my properties, I try to improve them, and I'm at your mercy if you can help me out on this situation. And as far as the city is, they have no plans that go that far back. The latest plan they went through is 1957, when they put the new water lines, so what they did, I guess they tell me, they cut down their water, existing water line, but I know there was water running there. So I'd like to continue this project, if possible, if I'm willing to allow to pay the difference and continue on improving my properties.
All right, thank you. I'll point out, the Director of Community Development happens to be here, Charlene Hamilton, as well, she may be able to answer any additional questions. The council itself does not set individual fees and adjudicate particular properties, but she's the boss, and so if there are additional questions or solutions that might be possible, she's the best.
Yeah, I was told to come here, so...
It never hurts.
Never hurts.
There's no downside of coming there, but we don't have the ability to...
I understand.
To kind of step in and fix that sort of thing, so...
I hope my presence will help me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's our only request under Item 1A, so we're now going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening, Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Air Quality Management District met on December 9th, we discussed the new proposed EPA rules on national ambient air quality standards, and what the district is going to do to meet those standards, and this basically is adjust the levels of particulates and ozone on a national level that each of the districts needs to comply with by 2027. And then we also did a slight adjustment to the air toxics fees, which is basically imposed, there's about 300 emitters in Yellow County, Yellow Salon of Air Quality Management District. The fees hadn't been raised since 1998, and even with the raised fees, we're still only a 38 percent cost recovery, but there was a slight adjustment. Those are the two items.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson, Mr. Kristof.
Yes, last Thursday, Regional SAN met, and we discussed the Echo Water Project, and the Echo Water Project is that $2 billion project that needs to be built and needs to filter the water so that it can go back into the rivers or the delta and so forth. One of the major topics that we discussed was, of course, our budget, and so far, we spent about $1 billion in contracts so that we can make that happen, and so we're at least halfway home, so things are moving forward, and we have a plan in place to generate adequate amounts of money, and we will continue to move forward. And another item was Wessex Saffka. Wessex Saffka is continuing to make levy improvements and continuing to acquire the proper acreage of land that we need to do in order to construct a levy so that we can go to 200-year flood protection, and I think we had 38 properties, and we have eight completed now, negotiations are completed with eight, and all of the other properties are in negotiations, or at least different bids have been proposed, and the Wessex Saffka is trying to move forward and get that property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristof. Ms. Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Up For Wessex Executive Board met on October 28th. We received a report on program funding from the First Five California Bridge Year and the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, and we are preparing to apply for Impact Funding, and Impact is Improve and Maximize Programs on All Children Thrive Funding. We also heard an update on the county's Read to Succeed Conference, which was held the following day, and retired Assistant City Manager Carol Richardson and Up For Wessex Director Justine Jimenez participated in a panel discussion at that conference. A subcommittee of the board also met in November to explore fund development needs for the program. The Water Resources Association of Yellow County met on November 16th, and the 2016 Board Officers were elected. We re-elected Bill Marble from City of Woodland as Chair, and Cecilia Aguirre Curry from City of Winters as Vice Chair, and Tim Halloran from the Yellow County Flood Control Treasurer. I served as Chair of the Nominations Committee. We also received our audit, and we heard a water legislation regulatory issues update, and we learned that the governor extended the executive order on the drought, but added streamlining and accelerated approvals for projects that add rainfall for local storage and recharge. And we also heard an update on a very interesting program in the City of Woodland, they have an aquifer storage and recovery project that they're developing, so it was interesting to hear about how they're dealing with their groundwater needs. And then earlier this evening, the Sacramento-Yolo Port District Commission met, we conferred with our real property negotiator on two items. We also had a pleasant surprise, we were visited by some Wessex Sacramento Girl Scouts Troop 2599, and I want to thank our city clerk, Chris Rankin, and her team for putting together a nice visit for them, they had a kind of behind-the-scenes tour of City Hall, I understand. And then we also had a consideration of an agrium lease assignment to Yaro International, and finally, we heard a workshop on joint port governance, the Joint Port Governance Agreement.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem of the DESMA.
Thank you. This past Monday, the 14th, was the meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District. A couple of items I want to bring to council's attention, one is, one of the items we reviewed was the Yellow County Transportation Staff, their recommendation to apply for grants through the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LC TOP, which is administered through the California Department of Transportation, but specifically, these are, this program is aimed at part of the, it's part of the Transit Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program, and it really is aimed at trying to lower greenhouse gas emissions and improve mobility within disadvantaged communities, and Wessex Sacramento is one of the ones that it benefits, it qualifies. So staff is recommending a couple of areas to where they could use those grants for increased service or lower emissions, so they're looking at some options which were reviewed, including putting in e-bus charging stations in the area, as well as looking at a couple of other potential programs that would benefit Wessex riders and service in the area. So there's some good possibilities, I pushed back a little bit on how we can maybe expand that program for Wessex Sacramento, really make sure it impacts our communities and our riders here, so I think staff feels good about that. We also had, I want to take a moment to thank local resident Sharon Hicks, a Wessex Sacramento resident, who came out to the Yellow Transit meeting this week. She really voiced some concern about the current state of bus service, especially in the Route 39 and 35 areas, the commuter routes going in into downtown, they're just not timely, so she had very big concerns about the status of service. And so I spoke with her both before and after the meeting, knowing she would be there, assured her that we are already working with the county, I'm sorry, with the County Transportation District on some resolution, so we follow up with staff a little bit on that, but there's definitely more, a little more urgency around that today, is some of the, how people feel, especially in the wintertime when they're waiting for buses or missing transfers into downtown. I think it's being felt a little more, so something we will connect on after the break, certainly, and continue our work in. So that's all I'll update today, thank you.
All right, thank you. A couple of reports, I attended a convening on social enterprises in San Francisco, we were asked to participate in as a potential host city for some work that's occurring in several larger cities across the country around the use of social enterprises to combat social problems like homelessness and unemployment. These are essentially business, nonprofits that are operating as businesses, and so I think I reported it earlier in the year when we visited, at part of the US Conference of Mayors meeting in June in San Francisco, we visited a high-volume production bakery that is staffed primarily by folks with felony records or with a pattern of homelessness or some other severe challenges that make them difficult to serve through the traditional workforce development system, and has had a significant amount of success in terms of changing income patterns and dependency patterns, but also just housing first, so trying to look at some options for how to scale that work out of the Bay Area and thinking about potential options here in Wessex Sacramento as a place to pilot more deeply that work in our region. So we'll be following up some additional background materials. No, I mean, we're not far along in terms of a project development, but it's encouraging to see some interest by some of the philanthropic community and some of the existing social enterprises in trying to make a stand up here as well. I was also asked to go to Harvard last week to present a session at the Institute for the new mayors that have been elected over the last year and a half, and you'll just appreciate that the session I was asked to present on was on how to engage with and activate and unleash the millennial generation, which I'm not a part of, but it was actually well-received, and some, you know, sort of the, both our work on things like urban farms and TBD Fest and transit and biking and other issues have been, were, generated a lot of interest, and also our challenges with exactly those same issues, and so a very rich discussion about gentrification, about age, about communication style, so pretty positive, but I just thought it was amusing that Wessex Sacramento was seen as a, you know, a national model for how to deal with millennials, and I think we're all, all of us are, including millennials, are trying to figure it out. Then last, the SACOG Board met last week, and it's, the most significant action is that the Board approved the awards under the various competitive regional funding programs. Those regional funding programs exist for community design, for bicycle, pedestrian, and other related services, and for regional-scale transportation projects. We had proposed, I think, six or seven different projects across those categories, and we were successful with three of our proposals, and winning just about, a little over, potentially over $7 million, depending on how the tiers work out for these three projects. That represents the third highest of any city in the region, the two higher ones being the City of Sacramento, not surprisingly, and the City of Elk Grove, which is three times larger than us, but it's the largest amount in Yellow County by far, and among all the other cities as well, so it represents a very strong effort and quality work by our staff team in terms of preparing the proposals, but actually the underlying projects and the planning work and everything else that's gone into making them competitive. You know, we're not just asked, what do you want, what would you like to have, but we have to compete against other jurisdictions based on what is the, what are the environmental benefits of our projects, what are the social equity benefits, what are the economic development benefits? I mean, it's a rigorous competition, and so to have three projects and $7 million get awarded is a pretty, is a pretty significant victory. So those projects were $2.3 million for road rehabilitation and repair in several sites around the city that the council has previously voted for. Again, we have, according to the pavement management system, you know, we have some of the best, the best maintained roads in the region, that's not saying very much, but, you know, but we won anyway, so we still got money, because the reason why we're among the best in class on this on-road rehabilitation, despite all of our frustration with, you know, particular potholes and particular roads with challenges, is that we just keep at it, and with dollars like this. So $2.3 million doesn't resurface all the roads in the city, but it is, it's a significant chunk in some key streets. Second was $1.1 million to start the work on the Sycamore Trail and freeway overcrossing that will, the council is well-familiar, extend the existing Sycamore Trail from Westfield Elementary to and over the freeway, and then down the Sycamore, the existing Sycamore Drain, past Westmore Oaks Elementary School, and ultimately to Stone Boulevard and to Southport, creating essentially a second, or a third, depending on how you characterize harbor, a second north-south corridor in the city, but in this case, that's designed exclusively for bicycles and pedestrians, not for automobiles, so that it provides a safe route, both for those two schools and neighborhoods, but also to transit through the city and its neighborhoods without having to necessarily go on Jefferson Boulevard to do so. So that's a significant step on that project. And then finally, $1.9 million, but potentially up to 3.7 if not everybody else finishes their projects on time, which often happens, up to $3.7 million to extend Riverfront Street, where it terminates currently in the Bridge District, southwards into the Pioneer Bluffs area and towards the future Broadway Bridge, and that first $1.9 million would be prioritized to begin with the bicycle track first, and then if we win, if we're able to get the additional money due to unfortunate circumstances in other jurisdictions, then we would be able to augment beyond bicycles to other modes of travel, including cars. So three very different projects, but all three significant wins, so good work on our staff, on staff team and on the commissions that reviewed all that work. All right, if there's no other reports, Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions. I want to make one appointment this evening, and that is to the Environment and Utilities Commission, and that appointment would be of the current alternate member of that commission to be a full-fledged member of the commission, and he's here, he led the Pledge of Allegiance. So maybe Alex Hirsch, Commissioner Alex Hirsch, if you might stand just for a moment. There was a time when the city commissioners and the council members, everybody all knew each other, because we were a little town, and everybody was in rotary together in the chamber, but now today, I think it's important that we introduce each other to our, so Alex has been a member, the alternate member of the Environment and Utilities Commission, which we just created this year, active member of that commission, he's an attorney with the Legislative Council's office, resides in the Capital Place Apartments, just down the street, and has been a very active member of that commission, and so I'm nominating him to become a full member of that commission. And I'd ask if there's a motion to confirm the appointment?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristof. There's no further discussion?
Nope.
All right, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. That motion is carries, congratulations, and thanks for your service.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, that brings us now to Item 2, which is consideration of the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem, and we do this once per year, and so let me open nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Johansson.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Sandin.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, are there any other nominations? All right, seeing no further nominations, then we'll close the nominations, and we'll just proceed to a vote. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none. Councilmember Sandin is our new Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations.
Thanks very much for the vote confidence, look forward to the year, thanks.
All right, you'll switch seats later.
All right, congratulations, and thank you to Mr. Ledesma for his service over this past year and again in this position, so thank you, thank you very much. Item 3 is recognition of the poster contest winners in support of 2015 Flood Preparedness Weeks, Flood Preparedness Week, and we're going to present one award, so I'm going to come up to the podium in just a moment, but did you want to say anything about this, Mr. Ledesma?
I'd love to, because I didn't get the opportunity to see.
Doing a lot of work on this work.
Yeah, so first of all, on this item, a lot of work goes into, and I know Mr. Kristof is our Wesaffka representative, is well-aware of the importance of flood preparedness, and this, every year, we go through this exercise of working to educate folks on being on Flood Preparedness Week. It's a great exercise, it's more importantly, a great opportunity to engage the young people in our community on this important subject, because as we all know, as parents, those of us that are parents, that we tend to listen to our kids who would tell us and bug us, because I have two of them, to get things down around the house that we don't normally think of in our busy lives, and it's a great way to prepare and prepare them and educate them on the importance of this. So again, this year was a big success, I think, we get more creative with this every week, and the kids that participate get more and more creative in this every year. So again, this has been a big, big part of our program, and so the recognition of this poster contest winner is very important, and it's well-deserved, so I'll let the mayor kind of go through with the rest of the presentation.
Mr. Kristof, did you want to say anything on behalf of Wesaffka?
On behalf of Wessex Saffka, this is a very important thing for us to do, because what it does is it brings the awareness, especially to the kids, it brings the awareness of being prepared for the potential for a flood. Talk about filling backpacks, and, you know, what do you need? You need water, you need this, you need that, and, but it's the exercise that I think really helps them, and it also helps their parents become aware of where Wessex Sacramento is. We're surrounded by water. We have some real needs and issues that we need to make sure we get addressed, and in the meantime, we should be prepared for high levels of water, whether it be, doesn't necessarily have to be a flood, it could be a number of things, and, but at the same time, I think that this is a good exercise for kids to go through, and quite frankly, it's a lot of fun, and so I think that that makes it a lot easier and a lot nicer. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to present the Achievement Award on this, and so I'm going to ask Jelena Rosalejos to join me at the podium. All right, so it is my pleasure to present the winner of our certificate of achievement for her work on the Flood Preparedness Week poster contest. As has been said by the city council members, this is a very important project that we do. It's not simply about educating kids and their friends about this issue for fun, but we know, just like recycling and so many other issues, that real change in our community happens because of young people, taking it by the hands and showing it to their parents, and reminding, and nagging, and explaining, and telling us how important it is, and Jelena's done that through her poster, so we want, maybe we can show, of course, stepped aside for a moment, maybe we can show the poster up on the screen, and then you can tell us what it's all about. There we go. So tell us, what is, what is the poster telling us, and what was your inspiration?
It's a map of the house, a backpack that says Plan Pack and Protect, and a umbrella to represent protecting your house.
Very good, that's, it's fantastic, and so we want to present with, present you the certificate of achievement, and thank you for helping to bring flood preparedness awareness to our whole community. Congratulations. (applause) We didn't mention this in the reports earlier, although it was one of the biggest wins of the month, but it's very related to this issue, so the, I can't remember the name of the board, but some very important board in the federal government reviewed the... the board, but some very important board in the federal government reviewed the draft scope of the GRR, the General Revaluation Report, that is, that is the key to our whole flood system project in West Sacramento, which, depending on what day of the week you ask, Greg, is either a 400 million, or an 800 million, or a $5 billion flood project. It's the biggest thing we've ever attempted in West Sacramento, and it's the most important because of all the reasons that Jelena just was describing in terms of the importance of protecting people and property here in our community. And we've been working really hard at trying to do something that no other community of our size has accomplished yet in the country, which is meet the very rigorous standards that were developed after Hurricane Katrina to make sure that we're really protected. And no one thought that a city of our size could pull this off, but the voters have done tremendous work in supporting a variety of financing mechanisms to make it happen. Our staff has, our partners have, the state has, and so we had our presentation before this federal board earlier in the month to get the green light to move forward to the chief's report, which would then unlock the possibility of all the federal resources that we need and the dollars that we need to complete that very important project. This Flood Preparedness Week work, this poster contest, and the game that we developed that the council is very familiar with, and I'm sure Jelena has played as well, the game that we developed on flood protection and awareness that is pretty, it's a pretty serious game in terms of learning how to stack sandbags and learning what to pack, but also like, for kids, like how to, why it's important to have, you know, full liability insurance on your house. I mean, it's, it's no joke. And it was a central part of our presentation to the federal board, because it's a very big priority of the federal government. They're not interested in just building levies everywhere if people are not going to take responsibility on their own to make sure that they're protected. And so this Flood Preparedness Week poster contest is a, is a small but very important part of that work, and so thanks so much to our flood staff and Greg, and, but also to the schools. I see Norm Alcottless here from the Washington Unified School District, thanks to the school district, and to kids like Jelena and their parents who have, who bring it to life, and to make us competitive for those federal dollars to fix our levies. So thanks so much to everybody for making that a big success. All right, with that then, we'll proceed to item four, which is initial discussion of public safety, staffing, and franchises as potential subjects for inclusion in a West Sacramento municipal charter. Mr. Robinson.
Evening. As you indicated, the subject, the topic for this staff report is public safety, staffing, and franchises as part of your discussion of a municipal charter. So I'll address the topics in that order. With regard to public safety, staff from the...
Mr. Robinson, could you bring that podium up some, because you're, I think you're too far away from the mic to be heard well.
I'm far, okay. Sorry.
And the heater's going. And the heater's going.
Hello? Better?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We had staff from the police and fire departments reach out to their peers in other cities where they have charters to inquire whether there were any operational benefits that they had discerned from having a charter in those locations, and those conversations didn't yield any specific public safety operational advantages, advantages that inure to cities that have charters. With regard to staffing, we looked, and many charter cities have in their, in their charter documents lists of personnel rules very similar in nature to the rules that we have here. So it didn't appear as if on the surface there was necessarily an advantage to putting those in a charter beyond institutionalizing those and perpetuating them so that they would require then a vote of the people to change rather than having a future council potentially change them. Also, some charter cities, particularly larger ones, have means to outsource certain non-public safety staff activities, or just activities, that they then put out to bid, like San Diego, for example, has a managed competition model that they use. That was interesting on its surface, but it appeared as if it would be very difficult to administer, maybe more appropriate for a larger jurisdiction, and we'd need to keep in mind if that's something of interest that our existing labor agreements would need to be, would need to be honored. And then finally, with regard to franchise agreements, on the surface, that appeared to be a pretty rich area for a charter to be potentially of benefit, but as we looked at that, there's a couple of things that kind of mitigate that, one being that the state, there's been a trend over recent years for the state to become more rather than less involved in franchise agreements, and we actually spoke to staff in a couple of different cities that have charters, and spoke to the staff responsible for administering their franchise agreements, and they were of the opinion that having a charter was not of a particular benefit to them in that particular, in that realm. So we didn't find necessarily that franchise agreements would be a particularly fruitful area here either. But having said that, I want to make a comment, both in relation to this staff report and to the next one, this would be applicable, is that our, our research on this is not definitive, so we're certainly open, if the council is aware of other instances where a charter has been of benefit in these realms, we're certainly very minimal to going back and looking at that and bringing back more information at a later time. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I would turn it over to the mayor and councilmember Kristof to lead the discussion.
All right, Mr. Kristof, you've been the lead on this topic, any comments on it?
The only thing, as John has indicated, was, especially with the public safety sector, we really couldn't find any advantages that a charter system had over a general law system. We're a general law city today, and there's a proposal that we become a charter city in the future, which will take a vote and all the other things. But at the same time, so we're looking for things to put into the charter, and one of the, one of the things was, you know, how does it affect public safety and this and that? Well, it really doesn't. One of the areas that could potentially be, and that would be some kind of a fire commission or a police commission or whatever it is, so that you have public people on that, well, that's really not an area which I care to go down. I think that our chief, both chiefs, have very good handle on our public safety, any public safety issues that are out there. And so, you know, I think that something like that really isn't necessary at this time. And then when you looked at franchises, I thought there may be some way in which we could extract additional dollars for the things that we do franchise out. And it comes to find out, it's really very difficult. The state has tied up things, feds have tied up things as far as utility rates and all of those other kinds of things for cable, and things that we thought might be easy to either reduce the fee or something like that, well, just because we're a city or a charter city, we're still not big enough in order to have that kind of an impact. The feds and the state actually control that, so it really didn't look like there was too much that we could use, and so I don't think that those are major issues that we need to really address in a charter.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, when I was looking through this report, you know, I think I see the rationale for public safety and staffing is not a lot of benefit, and on its face, it appears that there's not a lot of benefit with franchise, but because most things seem to be preempted by federal or state law anyway, and there's not a lot of things that a city can do to adjust that. But maybe there's something that staff can answer in terms of competition, you know, because we have the right to franchise and collect fees for the use of public facilities for, for example, wave cable. So if we wanted to get more competition in different cable providers to provide better and more services to create more of an environment, to create that more competitively, can we do that? Or do we have to have just one franchise, or can we have multiple franchises under general law versus would a charter allow us to do that?
Yeah, I'd actually, I'd actually throw a lifeline to the city attorney on this one. I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
That's not something that I've looked at. We can certainly take a look and see. There's not a lot of room left even in the cable area because of state law predominantly for cable, I think, as opposed to wireless. But we can certainly take a look at that, see if there's anybody else who's come up with a good approach, try to open it up more.
Yeah, I think the issue is just if there's a way to increase the competition and maybe give the citizens a better service.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that.
Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma?
Yeah, thank you, and...
I'm sorry, is it councilman Ledesma?
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin in a moment.
But thanks, Councilmember Johansson, for bringing that up, because that was my question as well, and I would echo that because of, you know, we had a presentation earlier in the year, I think it was, on the county's broadband study, and we made the point during that conversation around the importance of not, while we're looking at it at a county perspective, and what the cities of Davis, Woodland, Winters were doing on a broadband perspective, we're really more worried about what's going on in downtown Sacramento, since we're part of the urban area and the downtown area, basically, to make sure we can compete in getting firms here, getting businesses here, that they'd have the broadband support they need. We already have plenty of businesses here, I think they fill the need for choice, so if this wasn't, I would be interested as well, the exact reasons Mr. Johansson brought up, and seeing if there is an opportunity. This was the one I was kind of hopeful for, that we would find an advantage of here, and because of that reason. You know, being a person that works telecommutes and sometimes interrupted during the day with cable interruption, or, you know, again, it's just, it's not always the cable company's fault, but it is something, it'd be nice to have a little competition, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, too, was surprised when reading this report with these, the set of provisions with the franchises, I was holding out hope that, too, that there would just be something that might, might be of interest or we might have a benefit from, and so it did surprise me that that doesn't appear right now to be the case. I actually, I was curious, Mr. Robinson, if you can remind us about the, how the research is done for us, because you also mentioned if we had other information, we should share it, but I'm just, I'm just curious to know how the reports are put together, because you're doing a great job just summarizing a lot of information for us.
Okay, how these, how these...
Yeah, so is it League of California Cities? I'm just curious about how the information is gathered.
Yeah, we kind of, we start with League of California Cities, because they have a lot of resources on their website, and then, you know, we've talked to, you know, there's a few charter cities locally, and we have contacts with them, and that's, you know, a lot of those conversations happen. So for the, for this, for this particular item, we talked to Sacramento, Folsom, and Roseville, to the, to the city attorney's offices there with, who were involved with their franchise agreements. So that was kind of, that's part of the point behind the comment that I made previously, which is that, you know, there's not enough time, there's 121 charter cities.
Right.
So it's entirely possible that someone's doing something really interesting that we just haven't contacted that jurisdiction, so it's helpful to have the focus that you've given us with this item, to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I do think it'd be worthwhile, I mean, from my opinion, it sounds like from colleagues, to look a little more at the franchising area.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to put one more explanation point on, because I completely agree, and it would be unlikely, because the issue, at least for me, always was broadband, broadband access, quality reliability, our ability to extract fees, fees from the franchise companies was, you know, at least a tertiary issue. It's really about the, you know, the inequity and the availability and the unreliability of service throughout our city, and what that, what that means for access to educational resources, to economic development, I mean, a whole wide range of priorities that we have. Roseville and Folsom don't have that problem, you know, they don't, they don't have the problem that we have of large areas of their communities that are not served, they have had, they have the wealth, frankly, to have overcome that. So they're not necessarily the best examples of cities that would have had an imperative to figure out how to solve it. At the same time, I, it wouldn't surprise me if we still don't find anything that's like directly on that lane. But that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean a charter cannot get at these issues in other ways, right? And so if the, if the charter were to declare that in West Sacramento, it's a, you know, it's a fundamental right to have access to broadband, and then we orient the rest of our policies, and we say, okay, AT&amp;T, you want to do other things that aren't related to that, that's discretionary to us, we're going to evaluate them in the context of how well you are, how well you are voluntarily meeting our objective of universal broadband access. Same thing with wave cable. So I mean, you, this is, this may be one of those issues that, that, you know, the charter puts a marker in, and maybe we find some other, some other tools that provide a nudge here and there to try to increase the likelihood that the broadband providers would do the, would do what for us is the right thing, without necessarily finding some golden power that would allow us to order them to do it, which would be nice, but I think that's, I'm not, I'm not holding my breath for that one. I think we need to, we need to be, you know, maybe whether it's talking to broadband advocates, to the California Emerging Technology Fund, to the mayor of Winters, who's a pretty, pretty significant statewide leader on some of these issues, but to some folks in other places that are, that are, that are coming up with different kinds of ideas beyond what, what city attorneys in the wealthy cities are thinking. So, which is a good, good, good check-in also, but not, not enough, I think, in this, on this particular, on this particular, because it's very important in the city, it's one of the, one of the most consistent complaints that we get across the board, and across, you know, all geographies of the city, and from folks just trying to get access to the internet so their, so their son or daughter can do their homework, to companies that say, I can't locate in this part of the city because there's not, there's not enough broadband, or there's not enough broadband choices. And so if we can, if there's any hope for us to be able to solve that, we ought to, we ought to keep scouring the planet for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this, on this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson, thanks, Mr. Kristof. Then item five is initial discussion of finance, budget, and elections as potential subjects for inclusion in a West Sacramento charter. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Thank you. I'll address these topics in the, in the same order that you just listed them. I just switched, I'm sorry, I switched my notes the wrong way, I think I put away the ones I need. So starting with, starting with finance, one of the original reasons behind for the city's incorporation was a desire to be independent from Yolo County, both financially and otherwise, and that, that goal's been accomplished, but today, the city is still strongly affected, like every other city in the state, by the machinations of the state legislature in terms of mandates that are not reimbursed for, things like the ERAF shift, elimination of redevelopment. So the ability of any city to avoid those kinds of impacts from the state is extremely limited, but there is a chance that charter city status would improve the city's odds by creating an argument, potentially, that some future state action illegally impinged on the city's constitutionally protected rights, you know, to govern its own municipal affairs. There's also an opportunity with a charter to create kind of a symbolic statement, that it's found in many charters, that the residents of the community desire home rule relative to their own finances. So a number of different charters, especially in Southern California, will have a piece in them where it says, you know, our, our finances will not be deducted by other, by other levels of government, and we will not respond to unfunded mandates, for example. The, the legal strength of those kinds of provisions in charters is a little dubious, but they would have potentially symbolic value for the community. In addition, from a finance standpoint, having charter city status does create some flexibility with regard to revenue generation. For example, the city would have the opportunity to create larger fines for code enforcement violations, and there'd be the potential to create benefit assessment districts that are not necessarily grounded in the existing general laws. So right now, benefit assessments that a general law city would create need to be grounded in the 1911 Act or 1915 Act, or one of the existing laws that facilitates the creation of those, and under a charter, there'd be more flexibility, both in terms of the procedure and the content of the district, what you could fund. Many charters also lay out their city's budget practices, much as West Sacramento's council-approved budget policies laid out in the administrative policy manual that the city operates under now. So like the personnel rules that I discussed in the previous report, the key advantage to putting those rules in a charter would be to perpetuate them and prevent them from being changed in the future, at least easily, without a vote of the people. So in broad terms, a charter would allow the city to institutionalize current financial practices, avail itself of some additional revenue generating tools, and maximize its financial independence from the state, although the specific benefits that would happen would depend on the exact language that was in the charter. With regard to elections, having a charter would afford the city more flexibility in terms of the date, dates, rules, and procedures with which it held its elections. The city historically has already made some changes under the, under the general laws to its own election procedures. So for example, in 1987, soon after incorporation, the city changed its general election date from April to June, which put it on the same date as the statewide direct primary election, and this was done to increase voter turnout and decrease the cost from having a standalone election. In 1995, the council changed the election date to November of even-numbered years, this was also done to increase turnout. And then in 2004, West Sacramento voters approved Measure R, which changed the mayor's position to a directly elected position with a term of two years. So all these changes obviously happened under the general laws of the state, but under a charter, the city would have even more flexibility to make changes, including to the voting system itself. The city currently utilizes an at-large election system whereby any voter in the community can... any voter in the community can vote for any of the open, you know, the, the candidates that are running for any of the open council seats. In many jurisdictions, including Sacramento throughout the state, they use district-based systems in which voters vote for the candidate that's representing their particular district, but not, not citywide. Some people believe that this approach is helpful in assuring that minorities are properly represented and don't have their votes diluted by larger constituencies. And there's a, there's an analysis including in your, included in your staff report that was prepared by the mayor, the conclusion of which is that the conditions don't exist here to make that, that necessary to protect the voting interests of minorities. The council could switch to district elections under general law, as it stands right now, but there are other systems such as cumulative voting or ranked choice voting that are not available to general law cities. So if the council is interested in those, those could be a rationale for pursuing a charter. And those systems are summarized in your staff report. And then finally, there's a case pending before the U.S. Supreme Court that would change the definition of districts as they're used in elections across the, across the country. So that's just something to keep in mind if, if district-based elections are something the council's going to consider in the context of your charter discussions. That's the end of this presentation. I'd have to answer any questions or turn the discussion back to the mayor and Councilmember Ldezma.
Okay, Mr. Ldezma. Thank you. And thanks, John, for the research and I know some of the staff I've met with earlier regarding some, both of these subjects, in fact. So I appreciate everyone's time on this. You know, I'll speak about the finance one first, just to start some discussion and then, do you want to take these kind of separately and then, I'm not sure how the mayor, the council wants, do you want to talk, focus a little bit on finance, we'll come back to elections?
Why don't we do the, our presentations on all the topics first?
Okay.
Because then we have public comment.
Okay.
And then we can, then the council's actual consideration can be.
All right, thank you.
Chunked that way, I think it makes sense.
Yep. So first, on the finance piece, and John kind of summarized what, what I was going to bring up, which, and thank you for doing it, was kind of the motivation. And this was really an area, this one and I think the franchise one, which Mr. Kristoff brought up earlier, are, were ones that I was kind of eyeing and thinking about a charter city and what advantages, because that is kind of the threshold question we've thrown out and as we evaluated a charter, was how can, how can a, being a charter city versus general law city bring advantages to us? And I think one of the areas that I, I looked at was that this finance one, for the reasons that we were sort of born with four years ago coming into a post-redevelopment era. And we were sort of stranded, looking at what alternatives we had and what tools we had. And the city did a terrific job, in fact, leading-edge innovative solutions in terms of how we can move, continue to move the city forward and providing, continuing to provide redevelopment funds without a redevelopment agency. How can we continue to shape neighborhoods, build new neighborhoods, create infrastructure for, for the community, improve neighborhoods, whatever we could do, which we have done historically through redevelopment? How could we keep doing that? And there was some discussion during those times about what we could do if we were a charter city versus a general law city. But we have adapted quite well, I think, to our own, our, our own initiative in, in West Sacramento, through either our, our work in incorporating enhanced infrastructure financing districts to us as one means, but also from a budgeting standpoint, we've been very forward on our fiscal management. I think those are two areas we've, we focused in, at least I focused in, on this area. So first, on the fiscal management piece, I think it's this, it's important that through the charter city, the possibility of a charter city, to take some of the principles and practices that we have just maybe taken for granted as a city, our fiscal discipline, how we manage our city financially, is something that we need to think about incorporating somehow into the, into a charter. That is the principles of how we try to balance the budget principles and how we try to, actually the budgeting process that we go through. I think that is an important thing and I appreciate John's and the staff's work in trying to understand how other cities might do that. The other area that John brought up, what, what Joe was equally concerned about, and let me see, was, was how we can be more flexible, what tools we can have. The notion of, do we, do we need to find more revenue generating opportunities? And I don't want to say that that's the true intent of what I was, what at least I was looking for. I would not phrase it that way. Certainly, we were looking to find, in the post, that post-redevelopment era, we were trying to find ways to generate revenue. We were, because we needed to figure out how we're going to fund, continuing to fund these projects we had. But it is not the intent, and I don't want anybody to walk away with the intent that we're finding ways to, at least my intent is not to find ways to raise revenue from, extract revenue from any one group for the sake of raising revenue. For me, it's about our flexibility, improve neighborhoods, and what tools do we have? And there seems to be, John and others, that we found some, some areas that might provide some flexibility, especially in, as we pointed out, some of the, the assessment districts, the benefit assessment districts that we could, that could be formed. This was a discussion I had with the finance team and it, it's probably worth exploring a little more. But we do, in West, it's my opinion that in West Sacramento, we've done, learned to do big infrastructure projects very well. We've gotten, that's what we're, one of the things we're known for, we get things done, but we also know how to fund them. We, we're creative, we find ways to, to do things, including how we work to get an enhanced infrastructure financing district, be the first in the state to incorporate that. But are there tools that we could help neighborhoods help themselves? And that was one of the areas that I was looking at, is there other tools we can pull out that can help this? And I think there's, I think there's an opportunity with this area. If, if there are ways we can, if a neighborhood chose to form a district, to find ways to improve themselves, this might be another tool in the toolbox that we could pull out from an economic development perspective. Again, those are kind of things that I, that I found really important to think about as we, we consider charter, because it might bring those opportunities. On the elections side, this was a little bit difficult question for me, because I really hadn't thought about or considered West Sacramento's election cycle, other than it's, it's a, the exercise of having to participate in it for the last, at least three times I've had to do it. But the more I sort of oriented myself to how we do things and why we, how we got here, it kind of become, it's become, as you pointed out, a history of how we evolved. And one of the things I've learned in my, my experience at even planning commission, that the city has, had did after it incorporated, is adopted many of the rules of the county, right? As we incorporated, we didn't have staff or, Bill probably knows this, it was Carol and who else, the first employees?
Just Carol.
Just Carol.
Just Carol.
They could not write all the ordinances and the council at that time couldn't adopt all the ordinances. So we sort of just bitted a carbon copy and said, well, adopt a lot of what the county did. And so we were on their election cycle, it sounds like, and we had, we had, we adapted, right? We, we learned that moving it to the June primary was a better thing. And then later, council figured out that we needed better voter turnout and I wasn't there. Maybe Mayor, Mr. Kristoff has an opportunity to inform us about that piece. But again, they adapted. They moved to a November one to get better turnout. In 2004, six, 2004, thank you, 2004, we expanded, changed the election cycle again to have the mayors becoming out large and directly elected hosts. So again, we've, we've learned to adapt. And what, what I did learn during, during this exercise was while the city of West Sacramento has generally, the folks I've talked to generally are, agree with our current method, because I think they feel like the city's moving forward and the voting patterns have certainly showed that they agree with most of what we said. Tying it back to the finance area, when we passed Measure G and that got 87% of the vote, giving us full confidence that we're continuing to move in a direction in fiscal management and they trusted us with their dollars. To me, that was an indicator that they're, they're feeling they're represented and we're moving forward. That doesn't mean we don't have to evolve again, that our election cycle shouldn't change again at some point. And I think part of what we need to consider here is at what point and to what and to what will make it better, because that's the original threshold question. Will something provide a better, and what does better look like? So it's sort of the threshold question. I appreciate you putting it out there. I didn't even know that other, I knew about certainly district representation, because our, our neighbors across the river have that, as well as other cities. And again, I, I'm not sure that's the clear choice for us, because I don't feel it's working particularly well on that side of the river. But it's, it's another way of doing things. But I did not know there were other cities working with other methods of, of elections, which was interesting. Again, I'm not sure that's for us either. That's something that we can talk about. But it is, it is an interesting way to kind of put things, to make sure that we hit, know the full choices around, what are around us. The, the final point on this is, is just from my perspective, it's, I, I don't want us to ever stop and think we're perfect the way we are. It needs to stay that way forever. 10 years from now, if I'm, you know, the, the population will change, the dynamics of the city will change, the millennials will no longer be the young ones in the, in the, in the, in the voting ranks and they'll have to deal with a younger class of, it's just, the dynamics will change and things will change. And as a city, we need to be prepared to change with it, to make sure all voters feel like they're getting the best representation they can, in all neighborhoods and all everybody. But I'm just not sure what that is today. But I think that's the choice we have in front of us. We, charter city gives us that choice and it gives us the choice to evaluate it and, and, and see what's necessary, so.
All right. Then I took the, within the AdHoc Committee, I took the lead on the, the voting rights analysis, because that was a, that was one of the particular areas that the council had initiated a review of as part of the charter development. And it's a fairly technical, it's just very technical, analysis of the, the data. Just, but just to provide some context, there's, there's the California Voting Rights Act and the Federal Voting Rights Act on these issues. And as I walked through it, walked through the analysis and the numbers and the findings, they're with respect to the specific requirements and standards and definitions of those laws and the case law and the settlements and everything else that have emerged from them. And so there are a set of findings around those specific requirements. That is a related but distinct issue from whether we would want to have district elections, for example. Right? So there's the, there's the question is, does the, does the law demand that we have district elections? And that's a different question from, even if it doesn't, do we want to have them? Right? So the, so I'm going to walk through the analysis that's really about the, this legal question, first of all, but with the important caveat, that it's not a conclusion about whether or not district elections are something we should pursue, but it is trying to reach some conclusions about whether, you know, whether the, whether the terms of the California Voting Rights Act in particular, but the Federal Voting Rights Act also compel us to move to a, to a district election system. This all is derived ultimately from a U.S. Supreme Court case around Voting Rights Act that found a patterns of clear, the, the term of, the legal term of art is racially polarized voting in North Carolina several years back, where essentially they used a statistical analysis to determine that African-American voters consistently chose candidates, typically African-American candidates overwhelmingly in election after election after election. And that white voters in those, in those same places never chose African-American candidates. And as a result, those African-American candidates had no opportunity to be elected and that the African-American voters had no, because the elections were all at large, had no opportunity to have any voice in their, in their government. And so the court, and the court in that, in that instance, says you have racially polarized voting, district elections may be the appropriate remedy for that, for that instance. California took that, that concept and put it into statute through the California Voting Rights Act with more, with more detail, but still relying essentially on basically the same analysis and the same definitions. But the, the California statute provides more breadth around what the, what the rules of the game are. So we began this, this review in the summer to, as, just to determine whether or not we, we were required under the state law to move to that system. There's no specific statistical method that is used to, to make a determination under the, under the state act, but there are some pretty regular levels of analysis that are conducted by, by cities, by advocacy organizations and others to, to determine whether or not racially polarized voting exists. And, and then if so, what is the appropriate remedy? Because it is possible to have racially polarized voting and, and not have district elections as the only exclusive remedy, but there are methodologies for both of those. So to, for, for the city to be compelled to move towards districts, a challenge would have to show that as in, as in North Carolina, voting patterns in the city are correlated with race. Second, we have to show the, the ability of voters in protected classes. And if I say that word, that term again, we're particularly referring to Latino voters, African-American voters, and Asian-American voters, that their ability to elect candidates of their choice is, is impaired by the system of voting. And also that candidates preferred by those, by those protected class groups typically lose. And then fourth, that, the, sort of an overall conclusion that the voting power of that protected class of Latino, African-American, Asian-American voters has been diluted through the system of, of elections and voting that are in place. So that's, that's the four-part test that has to be proven in order to, to compel us to move towards, towards districts. So we did that, the several levels of that analysis, looking at all the data that's available, which in our city's case is extensive but not unlimited, because we've only existed since 1987. But we've had quite a few elections. I think we've, we've had all but one of our elections has been significantly contested since incorporation. So there are a lot of data points in that regard. And we've had a large number of, of Latino and Asian-American candidates relative to most other communities of our size and, and demographics in the region and all of Northern California. So the data is possible to, to, to do that analysis. So the definition of racially polarized voting and the primary methodology that the, has been, been used in the federal cases and it's referenced by the state law, is the concept of homogenous precinct analysis. And that is essentially a determination, you're trying to test in homogenous precinct analysis is, for those, for those precincts that are, you know, that are, are almost entirely Latino, are they voting different than precincts that are almost entirely white? And then you, from that, if you determine that is the case, then what are the, what is the actual outcome in the city? And how might that be affected by an at-large system or a district system or some other method of voting? And in, in the typical cases that have been, that have been heard, and also in all the federal cases, homogenous precinct analysis, recognizing that no, no, at least in California, no precincts are 100% anybody, that the, 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 the working threshold for homogenous precinct analysis is 80% of, of a precinct being of a particular ethnic group in this particular case. We have no such precincts in West Sacramento. There are no precincts in the city that are 80% Latino, African-American, or Asian-American. And so it isn't possible to, to make a finding under the federal law that there is racially polarized voting, because we have no homogenous, you can't have racially polarized voting without homogenous precincts in the, in the first place. We, we have no, no precincts in the city that where more than 60% of the residents are Latino, but we also have no precincts in the city that are less than 15% Latino. So we have a fairly, the Latino community is not geographically concentrated in the city, and that's true for the Asian-American community and African-American communities as well. That, we, I did do a test, because the voting precincts are drawn by human beings that are local, right? The county draws election precincts. And so in addition to looking at whether there were homogenous precincts, looked at whether or not there were homogenous census block groups. That's the smallest, that's the smallest geography of the census that you can have data for. And there are several of those in the city. And even in those, there are no homogenous census block groups. So you can't, you, it's not, it's just not an artifact of how Freddie Oakley has drawn the precincts. It's fundamental to the actual residential distribution by, by race and ethnicity in the city, that, that it's a fairly, it's a fairly even spread across the city between that 15% and 16, 60% standards. There are, is one of the city's election precincts that is a majority of Latino voters, and that is the precinct or in some, prior elections have been two precincts that centered around the Alcorn Village District of the, of the Broderick Neighborhood. And so I use those, even though they don't, they're not homogenous precincts according to the federal or state methodology, but just to test, just, you know, okay, but the law aside, is there something going on here? Use those two particular, those two particular precincts in Alcorn Village to, to, to do some further analysis that I'll describe in a moment. For Asian-American voters, the Asian residents don't comprise a majority of any precincts in the city or any block groups. don't comprise a majority of any precincts in the city or any block groups. There are three precincts in Southport that, in, in federal redistricting terms, you might consider Asian influence. That is that they have 15% or more of their populations are Asian, but, and as, all of those are in Southport. And there are no precincts in the city that have a population of African-American or Native American residents that's more than 10%. And so there's, you, you also cannot do racial, homogenous precinct analysis for any groups other than Latino voters either. So that's the, that's the most important of the analyses under, under the, the state and the federal law, because both of them depend on the, on conducting and performing that homogenous precinct analysis in order to be able to create a finding of racially polarized voting. And you cannot do that in, in the case of West Sacramento because of our population dispersion. But as I said, I did one, one level of supplemental analysis going beyond what's required by the law to take a look at these two particular Latino-majority precincts that have been roughly the same geography over the, over the period since 2000. We had pretty dramatically different precincts prior to the year 2000, so picked that, that as the inflection year. In your, in the, in the document that I provided the Council, provided the specific data around election by election. But you can also see this, if you, if you look at the precinct maps, for example, for each election since 2000, 2000 was the first year that the county produced maps of voter results by precinct. And so you can see what the, what this table also shows, which is that through those maps, is that in 20 out of the 21 cases since the year 2000, 20 out of the 21 elections, not counting things where it was, you know, for example, one year I was on the ballot and uncontested, that doesn't count. But in 20 out of the 21 cases where there was an election, those two Latino-majority precincts voted identically to the rest of the city as a whole. And so there's, there's no racial polarization because there's no racial difference between the, those precincts and the, and the remainder of the city. That one other instance was one particular outlier, but doesn't represent a pattern or trend towards racially polarized voting, and that itself was nine years ago. And then finally, the, the state law also requires, separate from an analysis of the voter, of the voters in a particular precinct is about candidates, in particular candidates who are members of a protected class. So in our case, we'd be principally concerned about Latino candidates who are preferred by Latino voters, and whether or not they have been elected to, in this case, to the city council. As I indicated earlier, we've had several, several candidates from a variety of ethnic groups elected to and running for the city council during this period. In total, eight individuals have been elected to the city council since the year 2000. So people have been reelected as well, but a total of eight distinct individuals have, have been elected to the city council. And of those eight, three have been white candidates, three Latino, and two Asian candidates. So rough, roughly reflective of the city's diversity, although more Latino and Asian candidates have been elected proportionally than white candidates during that period. That's a stark contrast to the 1990s, when there were no Latino candidates elected at all during that period. But it was also in the 1990s that the shift to the November election cycle changed the voter, overall voter turnout, and also dramatically increased Latino voter turnout in the community as well. So half of the Latino candidates who have run for the city council have been elected in the, in the last 15 years. That's twice the success rate of white candidates. And all of, and the Latino candidates who were not elected were also not chosen in the two Latino-majority precincts. So there was no, there's no, that provides no evidence of racially polarized voting either. And as I say, three, three Asian candidates, just to close the loop on this one, have been candidates since the year 2000. And none, even though the Asian-influence precincts in the city are all in Southport, none of the Asian candidates have been from Southport. The two successful ones were also successful in every single one of the city's precincts. So there was no polarization geographically or racially. And the third Asian candidate who was not elected, she was not, she was not the preferred candidate. She wasn't the top or second vote getter in any of the city's precincts, including the three Asian-influence precincts. So there's, so you can find no evidence of racially, racially polarized voting or block voting against candidates who are Latino or Asian in any of these instances since the year 2000. So that's the, that's the overall findings that, at least according to the, the principal tests of the State Voting Rights Act, using the, the federal voting rights methodologies that the state act refers to, that West Sacramento isn't, isn't characterized by racially polarized voting or any of the other standards that are in the statute. As I say, that's the legal test. That doesn't mean we can't choose to have districts anyway. I would note that, however, that last year Senator Padilla, before he was elected Secretary of State, sponsored a bill that would have made it clear that district elections were subject to the same analysis, that you can't, you can't simply have district elections and assume that they are the, they are the best thing for equal representation and for civil rights. You have to, they're subject to these same, these same rules. And West Sacramento in some sense provides a good example of why that's, why that's the case, because the Latino candidates who have been successful for the city council, all three of them in the last decade, all, none of them would have been elected if there had been, if the, if the city had been, council had been elected by district, because in each case, the elect, the, the winning coalition that elected a Latino candidate was a coalition comprised of Latino-influence precincts and precincts that had low Latino populations in Southport that could not have been drawn into a, into a single district, even by Willie Brown. So, so a district election system would, would potentially run afoul of that test. Now, I will point out that that bill was vetoed by the governor, but it was vetoed by the governor because the governor said, that's already existing law. District elections are already subject to the same racial polarization test and the same candidate test as at-large elections. All right. So that's, that's my supplemental report to, to Mr. Ledesma's piece. But I'm, I hope it helps to answer some of the threshold questions that, that we've all had, I think, about, about the legal side of the House, while recognizing that, that the discretion about whether to recommend to the voters that we move to district elections or any other system of voting still remains a, a policy choice for the, for the Council and ultimately for the voters. So with that, yeah, I was going to go to public comment, but if there are clarifying questions or...
I've got a couple of questions. John, under the finance part of this, one area I'd like to take a look at, and that is state interference. And I know when we were going through the water meter battles a few years ago, I thought one of the reasons that West Sacramento didn't have as strong a case as, we'll say Sacramento, was because Sacramento was a charter city. And I know they continually throw that out. They threw that out time and time again, that we're a charter city. And so I was wondering if there had been a time delay as far as when Sacramento had to have water meters installed, especially in comparison to West Sacramento, because ours seems to be, you know, fairly quickly, I mean, quick turnover in Sacramento. And I was just wondering if it was because they were a charter city, they had a little preferential treatment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of that. I don't, I don't know. We can, we can definitely look into that and get back to you, though.
Okay. That would be an area that I would be interested in. I know we have public, public comment on the other part of this, which was district elections, I believe, or election cycles, elections in general. And...
Maybe other stuff, too. I don't know. Maybe other, other topics as well.
Oh, maybe. I mean, I, I think the city of West Sacramento has...
Could we cut the public comment before the conclusions, though?
Yeah.
Maybe if we, if there are any other technical, technical questions or comments?
No.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. So the, we have a couple of requests to speak. The first is by Carlos. Salut.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for that thoughtful analysis. That was a very good analysis.
Thanks.
But I think what I would point out today is that none of you is for Broderick or Bright. All of you are representing Broderick and Bright as you represent the rest of the city. I, today, I'm here for LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, and for the Dolores Huerta Latino Democratic Club. We are both opposed to chartering, because we believe that getting, giving the, getting a charter for the city will perpetuate inequity. We believe that it is inequitable that, to have the at-large elections. We believe that if we had district elections, people would, there would be a person representing, there would be a person from our areas up there on the city council. I know that you all feel that you can represent Broderick and Bright from wherever you live, and maybe you can, maybe you can't. But from our feeling about direct democracy, we feel that democracy works best when you elect representatives from your own areas. I don't know who was representing Broderick and Bright when redistricting occurred in 2010. I do know that Broderick and Bright are the only parts of the city that were separated from the west of, west Sacramento. We were coupled with Woodland, I believe. The representative for Broderick and Bright on our Super Bresorial District is from Woodland. I don't have anything against Mr. Rexroth because I've never met him. I don't know that anybody in Broderick and Bright has ever met him. But he's our representative, because whoever was representing us in 2010 did not keep us with the west, with the rest of West Sacramento. I feel that if we had had a representative, we would have been more valued. We would have perhaps been part of West Sacramento when those districts were drawn up, but it didn't happen. And I know it could happen in 10 years, as you stated, but there's no reason for that to happen. There's no, there's no reason to wait for 10 years. And there's no reason to base it on a legal analysis. Sometimes you just base it on what's right. And that's the reason we've taken the position that we've taken, because we feel that perpetuating the inequities is just not right. But thank you all for taking the time to let us speak.
Thank you, Carlos. Maria, you ready?
I wish to echo what he said. And it seems that this is an exploratory thing that you're doing, that you're trying to see whether it is a good idea to go to a charter or not. And that's supposed to be what you're supposed to be doing. That's the impression that you give. But are you sure you're not trying to codify what your, the, the practices of the city and, and charter them and put them into a charter? Are you sure you're trying to find an answer? Or are you already made up your mind and you're going to find a way to, to, to create it into a charter? I mean, that's what it appears from what, from hearing you speak. And so, anyway, as far as at-large elections, it's just simply the right thing to do. I live on Michigan and Maple. I'm sure you're very familiar with that. I have a beautiful home there. And I would like the person that represents me here to live in my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So those are all the comments that we have on, on, I don't know, we'll return to the Council and Mr. Johansson?
Sure. Yeah. So I, I think the, the main points that I've gotten out of this conversation is the, I think the revenue flexibility that Councilmember Ledesma spoke about. So, so basically, the staff report is saying that the, there's more flexibility in special benefit districts. Now, they still have to go to a vote, but it appears that the benefits are that either the procedure for developing these assessment districts or the procedures for how the money is spent is a little more flexible under a charter. Can you just maybe elaborate on what a general law, law assessment district can't do that a charter can do? I mean, just some of the flexibility in process or...
Yeah, I think, and I don't, I don't have the specific terms of what one is allowed or the other, but the, the benefit assessment district that's created under the general laws of the state has to refer back to specific acts that were created by the legislature that facilitate those districts. So then those have within them procedures for how they're to be adopted and the, the, the improvements that can be made with different kinds of districts. So to the extent that the city stayed within Prop 218 and other laws that applied to charter cities and general law cities equally, the city would have flexibility under a charter to create districts that were not contemplated under those laws. And we had a couple of examples in the staff report just to illustrate that, but potentially, you know, modifying the procedures in different ways, or potentially having districts that ref, that finance improvements that are not found in the existing law.
So now, a P-bid, that's under existing law?
Right.
So, so we can do a P-bid now under general law. So I guess one of the examples was graffiti abatement for a neighborhood.
Yeah, hopefully that was a good example. But yeah, I mean, things, things that were not contemplated in those, the, the laws that are on the books focus on traditional improvements, you know, parks and pipes and roads and things like that. So if there, you know, it occurred to us technologically oriented improvements that might not be mentioned specifically, that might be an area, and then potentially some of the, some of the procedural things, which I don't have specific examples of.
So I guess the question is, so if you wanted to, for example, have Wi-Fi coverage more in a neighborhood, you could potentially base it in an assessment district to try and create that infrastructure. Right? Okay. I mean, that's, I saw is, is a, you know, potential benefit for this type of thing. And so, I mean, in terms of the election, you know, we've, we've, I've heard, thank you, Mayor, for the analysis and the data is fairly exhaustive. And I appreciate the comments from Carlos in bringing this in. And it's, it's been always an issue, you know, where the representatives come, come from, when they run for, for office. And I know it's expensive, and I think that's one of the, I wasn't really mentioned in this conversation here. But, you know, frankly, if you come from a more wealthy neighborhood, it's a little easier to come up with $50,000 than if you come from an area that's not, or you have to rely on supporters to do that. That's one issue of, of just the way West Sacramento's laid out. But, you know, I think everybody's looking for qualified candidates wherever they come from. And, and if you have a qualified candidate from any part of town, I think, you know, you'll find, you'll be able to find funding in a campaign. Maybe not easily, but, but it would be there. And, and just in terms of, you know, our ability to represent the, I mean, I, the entire city, I mean, I like, I think the enjoyment and the benefit that I think I bring, and I think the rest of the Council bring to the city, is, is looking at the city as a whole. I mean, we're, I think most of us here are port commissioners, so we're dealing with the port, and we're dealing with all aspects. And we'll field calls from all over the city, and we have to be aware of what's going on all over the city. And, you know, we didn't make, you know, I may not live in this particular corner of West Sacramento, but I know the other folks down in, someone who lives in Brighton-Broderick wouldn't live in other parts of, of West Sacramento. I think it makes us stronger leaders to be aware of what's going on in the city as a whole, because there's so much going on in the city. And just going back, and particularly Brighton-Broderick, we don't have the, our strategy session things on the wall anymore. I think they're back in the Council chambers. But, you know, particularly Brighton-Broderick, this is probably in 2006 or '07. We, on that board, one of the top policy agenda was a Brighton-Broderick strategy. And that's carried through all the way since I've been on city council. And, and I don't think any of us were from Brighton-Broderick really during that time. And so that's resulted in, you know, parks, it's resulted in, you know, concentration on roads, it's constant, it's resulted in, you know, more involvement with, with police and outreach. And, and, you know, we've dealt, hopefully constructively, with the gang injunction issue, and I know that's, that's been a problem. But, and so there's, we've done a lot of focus in that area. So it definitely, definitely hasn't been ignored, you know, whether or not someone who is from Brighton-Broderick could have brought more to the area, it's, it's, it's hard to tell. But, you know, I don't think there's really any area of town that, at least the Council, since, as, as far as I know, is ignoring any part of town. So, you know, I'm not so sure about districts. And I think, you know, one of my main problems with, with district elections, and I, I kind of see that across the river, that when you're in a district, you're kind of concerned about your district, and you, you become very myopic in terms of how you view city politics. And, you know, for example, if we want to work on a streetcar, and, and we've got maybe one or two districts across the way that it's in their district, yeah, they're interested. But if it's not, maybe not. And, and it becomes hard to... And, and it becomes hard to get a decision then with a govern, a governing body when you don't have everybody that has a stake in that. I think at-large tends to get everybody up here at, a stake in the outcome. So, you know, and I, I think in terms of the comment that, you know, we're, we've got a predisposition to have a charter, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody here, here does. I think, you know, it's all a learning experience for us. We've seen so far in this report, and I think the last report, that there's things that a charter won't do, and there's really no need for it. I mean, there's a couple of gems here tonight that I think would be worth looking at, particularly if we're looking at policies of, of, you know, maybe the, the network or the Wi-Fi or some of the kind of information technology that, that would really benefit a lot of the parts of the town that don't have that, that gets in the educational aspect and, and social outreach and some of the things we've talked before. I think that's big, but, you know, then again, we'd have to see if we could do that without having a charter. So is the charter the only way to do that? If we can do it as a general law city, then what's the point of having a charter? So, couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. I, I didn't, even though Mr. LaDesma and I worked together on the, on the piece, other than my exhaustive legal analysis, I didn't really comment on the other topics, and I did want to briefly, maybe starting with the district one, just to, to lead off where it stopped. Because I, I see, I, I certainly see some of the challenges with at-large systems. I see more challenges with district systems. There are more choices than just those two. But I'm parti, maybe my greatest fear about districts is the immediate one, which, which Mr. Robinson mentioned just obliquely, which is that if the Supreme Court rules, which is at least a 50-50 chance, if not greater, over the next couple of weeks, that districts have to be drawn only based on voting population and not on population, population, the impact on diversity in our community, on the school board and the city council would be disastrous. And on the coherence of our community, and the sense of that we're a single place and just the, the right to basic services and representation. And so that is a huge, huge risk. And so this, in, in some sense, this is the worst possible time in the last 50 years to be contemplating a, a switch to district elections. But also, you know, we, we, I'm, I'm the first member of the council in the history of the city to be north of the freeway, I think, if I remember correctly, to reside north of the, of the, of US 50. And I have lived south of 50, lived north of 50, learned, just lived just on 50 practically. It hasn't changed dramatically the sense of the city that I inhabit. I'm still eating at Sal's in the Pheasant Club, I'm still visiting schools everywhere, still stopping at soccer games all over the place. It doesn't change much of the daily life, except where the destination ultimately is. But the, what we're, but are, sometimes we, we think about this issue as just being about Brighton-Broderick, but the differences between Meadowdale and the rest of the city are much more significant than the difference between Brighton-Broderick and Westfield, as an example. Most folks in the city could not tell you where Meadowdale is. And it's a, essentially a maroon neighborhood at the far western edge of the city. They've never had a representative on the city council. There are portions of Southport that have never had a representative on the city council. People outside, people outside of Southport think of Southport as one, one big gigantic blob. But if you live in Southport, you don't think of that at all. You're thinking there's, you know, there's 25,000, 20,000 people that live here, and there are very distinct places and neighborhoods in that community as well. Absent a dramatic increase in the size of the city council, we're not going to get to a point where there is a representative for Westfield, and a representative for Maple Hall, and a representative for Brighton, and representative for Broderick, and a representative for Westmore Oaks, and one for the state streets, and one for the 17 neighborhoods in Southport. That's not possible. And it's not, so it's not, it's not achievable, and trying to drive in that direction, I think is, is, creates a false expectation about what the role of the council and individual council members are. So, you know, in, in the absence of going to a 25-member city council, I just don't see the, the advantage to, to the districts. And I think a lot of their issues that Mr. Johansson mentioned are certainly present. But also, you know, doing this exercise for the Voting Rights Act and trying to scope, because one of the requirements is that you kind of, you do, you do essentially some straw districts. Well, what if you had districts? Could you, could you make, you know, some Latino majority district? Could you make an Asian majority district? Turns out you can't. But as you try, what you, what you find is that the natural lines of, of drawing districts based on the, the standard rules of redistricting would place the rivers, for example, in which is in Broderick, would place the rivers in a district that went down to Mr. Commissioner Hersch's place, the capital place, my place, in the Bridge District, and into, and into Pioneer Bluffs. That's the natural district. The population of, the remainder of Brighton-Broderick is a district all in to itself. The pop, the geography of the city is changing, and I think this is partly to Mr. LaDesma's point a moment ago, that the city 10 years from now is not going to be anything like it is today. That's certainly true in terms of social, ethnic and, and economic geography. We're already seeing that. It is no longer the case that you can use simply zip codes as a proxy and have, and be, be able to make, you know, broad generalized statements about race or income. Just, it simply isn't possible any longer, and that's going to change even more over time, as there's more wealth throughout the city and more diversity around this, around the city. And so the idea that geography is somehow going to, districts would solve that, I think, is also a false expectation. And that certainly has been the case over the last decade in terms of the changes that have occurred. We can't control the county redistricting. The county, the reason why a portion of west Sacramento is no longer in the same supervisory district as the west, the rest of west Sacramento is that we have been growing. So we, we are growing faster than Woodland and Davis. We did in the last decade. We are in this decade, we will in the next decade, and the decade after that. So each census, after each census, more of west Sacramento will be into at least two supervisory districts. If you ask the, the, the mayor of Davis, he thinks, you know, and within 50 years, will, the entire Board of Supervisors will be in west Sacramento. But that's just, that's just a consequence of the relative population growth of the two communities. And then the, the geographic options don't allow us to create one, one district that's half west Sacramento and the other is half west Sacramento. We're not big enough for two districts. And what's, what's an interesting artifact, and Mr. Kristof knows this well, having been from the bright neighborhood, is that for much of the last century, the represent, where the same situation was the case, where Bright was in the same supervisory district as Woodland, the representative was from Bright. The Bright was like 10% of the district, Woodland was 90%, but the representative was from Bright. Supervisor Mars was, you know, represented both of our, both of our communities. And so that's not something we have control over, and that's, but that's the kind of artifact you get with a district system that is subject to those kinds, to being redrawn every 10 years by politicians, frankly, as a result of changes in the census. I don't, to me, that's not really, it's not a strong argument for making that kind of a change. One area where I, I think, if, if we were doing, it's not enough for me to do a charter by itself, but if we had a charter placing the, the requirement that our elections be at the general election, the statewide general election, which has had the most fundamental impact on diversity, equity, and turnout, voter turnout and participation of anything the city council has ever done, putting that into a charter, that that is the standard, that cannot be changed by city council that wants to manipulate turnout lower, or that wants to manipulate the diversity of the community, that is exactly the sort of thing that belongs in a charter. That's a statement about voter turnout and participation is a fundamental policy of the community and of the voters, and it's not subject to the change of the city council as the prior system had been. So that, that would be one area where, where I think that we have an option. If we're interested in neighborhood-based elections, you know, Elk Grove has had a different system, not unique to Elk Grove, but Elk Grove has had a system of election of council members not by districts but from districts. And it's a hybrid model where, where a candidate must live in a geographic district, but the whole city votes. And it attempts to try to get at some of the issues that Mr. Johansson was describing with respect to accountability to the whole community, and also recognizing that projects and initiatives and things in the city happen in different times and different places. I, I, I'm not, there are a lot of reasons why that system also has challenges. I think there's no perfect election system, but it's one we ought to, you know, we ought to pay some attention to. It has nothing to do with the voting rights issue, because it's a citywide election, but it does have something to do with the neighborhood issue, and it might be, might be an area that we could contemplate. Another election issue that we have not grappled, we, we've not really faced in our city, but has been a case in other places, when there are many, many, many candidates in an, in an at-large system or in a, in a district system, we don't have a primary and a general election, like, like Sacramento has and, and other cities that are, that are larger. And so it is, it is mathematically possible, and in other communities mathematically frequent, that someone could be elected to the city council with 15% of the vote or 20% of the vote. That, that doesn't happen, that has never happened in our city, but it's, it's mathematically possible. And there are, there are ways of, of trying to avoid doing that. You could have a runoff system. Plenty of cities do that. It's expensive, both for the cities to operate two elections, but also for candidates to run essentially two, two different campaigns. You could move to a ranked choice voting system, which is one of the options that, that Mr. Robinson has laid out as a, as a voting system, so that you're essentially doing an instant runoff, where, where voters are voting for their first choice, second choice, and third choice. And if their first choice is the lowest vote getter, then, then you go to their next choice until every, so everybody's vote is recognized in the ultimate outcome, and nobody can win without getting at least some support by a majority of the community. I, I met a mayor of another city who's, who, where they have a threshold of 40, you must get 40% in order to win in the, in the primary election, and you have to have at least a 10% margin over the next highest candidate. But you don't need 50%, right? Because 50, because, and it turns out that that's a large number of the runoffs are by, are involved candidates who got, who had a large margin of, of plurality, but didn't quite hit the 50% mark, right? They, they got 45% of the vote, the next highest candidate got 20%, and yet still we have to have a whole new election. And so at least there are some other cities, apparently, that have a system where there's a, where there's a, essentially something less than a 50%, but shows that it's, that it's, it's not one of these artifacts where you've won with 11% of the voters supporting you. So that's an area where, where we have had no problems, but there's nothing intrinsic or special about us that has caused us to have no problems with that issue. And it's the sort of thing that a charter gives options for, that the general law gives zero options for, other than moving to a, a primary and runoff system. So that, that, just, that's on elections. On the finance stuff, I, I want to concur with Mr. LaDesma's comments about the, the revenue piece. To me, the, the revenue piece is, is really about risk reduction and independence and autonomy from state raids and takeaways, not so much that it means we get more money, but that we're spreading our revenue sources more broadly, so that if, if we were to do a documentary transfer tax, you know, change here, and then next year the state took that away, that we would still have 17 other little revenue sources that altogether made it possible for us to, to provide some sense of security and insurance of stability of services to our residents, that, that things like the redevelopment takeaway and some of the sales tax shifts in the prior decade put at risk. And so it's, it's not so much about just how do we get more money? It's about how to spread our portfolio, so that where we're getting money is from a number of different sources, and the likelihood that the state is going to go after all of them at once is reduced. So it's really, it's a risk reduction strategy, more than it is about how do we, you know, how do we double our revenues? We don't need to, we don't need to be doing those in order to do that, but we do need to make sure that we have a, a solid financial portfolio of revenues, that not, all of which are not subject to state arbitrary and capricious action at any one moment. And so I appreciate the, the, at least the initial list of items that you've identified and are starting to scope, that we, that a charter could potentially give us the authority to implement, either in advance or in the event that we were to suffer a significant, you know, a significant catastrophic, governmental catastrophic event as a result of our friends across the street in the Capitol. The other kinds of issues that fit in this space for me, discussions that we've had in the past about red light cameras and other issues where I have the opposite concern, which is that we don't have sufficient protections for citizens against capricious actions by government to, to extract too much money from them. So if you, you might recall, this is my, this is my law enforcement economics stuff coming back out, but the, the idea that if, as we increase the likelihood that you're going to get caught for more and more offenses because of cameras, because of monitoring systems, because of sensing systems, as we increase the likelihood of you getting caught for any particular thing, I don't mean, like, I don't mean felony crimes, but, you know, running, running a red light or littering or whatever, as, as the likelihood that you're going to get caught goes up, the amount of the fine should be going down. Because the reason why we set very high fines for things like parking in a disabled parking space isn't because the cost to society is $500. It's because we're not going to catch you all the time, and we want to make sure that the one time that we do catch you, even though it's going to be hardly ever, but the one, if we do catch you, it's going to be super expensive. But once the calculus changes to, we're almost certainly going to catch you, we should not be charging $500. This is how you end up with situations like Ferguson and other communities, where citizens have racked up, you know, hundreds or thousands of dollars of fines that put them into the criminal justice system and they can't get out. So to me, this is, that's the kind of policy issue that, that a charter ought to be starting to think about. Issues around, issues around privacy, around, around the relationship between enforcement and fines is a finance issue, but it's also a citizen, a basic citizen right issue, which we've never had to grapple with before. And the general laws don't give us a framework to do, but certainly could, could merit some, some of our attention. Some of our policies about refinancing, which are almost charter-like in the sense that our director of finance and Mr. Bloomberg, Bloomberg, every time they come forward, they start their presentation with, "I promise you, we are not just shifting costs into some future generation by, you know, by refinancing something that we're about to pay off in four years and making it a 27-year, 27-year bond or loan." Every time, they know that this is a fundamental value of the, of the city, that we, we take care of our own financial business. We don't, we don't shift all of our obligations off to future generations. Again, that's the sort of policy, policy framework that is, that is an appropriate statement for a charter to make and to have a potential controls to, to minimize the likelihood of those things happening. The water meter issue is in some sense a good example, not of that, but of, of the power that a charter can have. Because the water meter provision of Sacramento's charter did not ultimately prevent the state from overriding them and saying, despite the fact that your charter says no water meters, you're going to have to. But it certainly gave Sacramento decades of, of time, because, yes, the state can do it, but the state has to, has to do it. It has to affirmatively override your charter. Possibly there's litigation involved while, while the courts determine whether or not it's a matter of statewide concern or not. So it, it's not as, so even if you're overridden, it may buy you the time you need to be able to adapt. And I think the water meter in some sense was a, was a good example of that. The legislature was reluctant to try to override the water meter charters because of the charter language. We benefited from that because we were in the same region. But I think it's, it's an example of how even where a charter may not be, might not provide you ironclad constitutional protection against everything, it can give you a, a defense tool and at least buy you some time and some space that you would not have under, under the general, the general law system. Riffing on what Mr. Johansson mentioned about Wi-Fi, the notion of the city, of Wi-Fi, citywide Wi-Fi in broadband and, and provided on a, on a wireless basis, being a utility service of the city, I don't know whether that can be done on a general law basis. And there are cities that have been, that have been examining this sort of thing, but it is a, it is a relatively, it's a very new area of law and of utility service. And I, and I, and if there's an opportunity to authorize us to do that, I don't know that we're, we haven't done the finances, I don't know if we would want to, but it's exactly the sort of thing that, that we ought to have the ability to try to take a different approach to solving that problem, rather than just begging AT&amp;T to, or begging Comcast to, you know, to provide some service over, over here as well. So those are my overall, my, my, my specific comments on all the specific provisions of this. It, it does matter. I mean, the, the relationship, the Bee Today ran a story with the State Controllers Database of City and County Personnel Expenditures, the most recent report, and we reported in. And on a statewide basis, counties who are the most closely tied to the state, right? They have the, the least independent from the state, their, their human resource costs, their salaries, compensation, benefits, and other costs went consistently up over the last seven years, even and actually especially during the recession. So while the private sector and most of the public sector were, were tightening, the, the instrumentalities of the state that were most subject to the general laws of the state were not demonstrating those same efficiencies. Cities, on the other hand, on average, and west Sacramento is an example of that, reduced in, reduced their, their costs and their, their burden on the taxpayer during the recession almost across the board, and charter cities slightly more so. So it is, it's just, it is a reminder of, of, in, of, in some sense, how having the flexibility, that even, even a slightly more amount of, a slight more amount of flexibility can make real tangible differences in terms of the burdens and benefits that, that taxpayers and citizens face in our community as a result of those ties. So, so just to, to, to confirm with Mr. Johansson, that I am not committed to doing a charter. We are in exploratory mode and trying to figure out, is there, are, are there, you know, key benefits or indispensable benefits or some totality benefits that would make, make this make sense, and then decide to put, to put it to the voters? But it's not a preordained conclusion. If we, if we, we run into too many of these areas like franchising, where like, oh, if we thought there might be something there and there isn't, it's too much work and effort and time for us and for voters to have to consider a charter if there's not the benefits there. And so that's what this process is about, and I think we're all authentically committed to doing that. Mr. LaDesma?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, because I know when the speakers asked that, that, no, there is no predisposition here. This is all exploratory and it's all discovery for us. It does give us an opportunity to kind of think about our government, how we work, and how the issues that we've learned about, at least I've learned about, as being a part of a general law city. It, it gives us a chance, a pause, to kind of contemplate what could be It gives us a chance, a pause, to kind of contemplate what could be better for us. We've grown so quickly, so fast, even in five years, I've been on council now. The things we've had to work on have just been complex, immense, from state raids and mandates to just trying to, how do we improve a neighborhood or what kind of services we provide, become very complex. And so I'm very much, this is allowing me to have some intellectual curiosity about the possibility of what this would bring, but that's it. And I assure you, right now, as some of the other council members said, today's probably the one day where we actually had something, a couple of nuggets that actually made it sound like there could be something fruitful here. But we also have to balance our decision on this, on the amount of time it takes these folks to kind of help us usher that through, and then our time to talk to all of you about that possibility and what it would bring and what the benefits are, which would take it to an election. And that's not at all, that's not an easy task in and of itself. So our threshold here, I think, is pretty high in terms of us getting over that hurdle of when do we say it's the right thing? So I appreciate the question, though.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin. With regard to the elections, I would echo my colleague, Councilmember Johansson's thoughts pretty closely. So the other area for me is in revenue generation, in your staff report, you had a paragraph about a charter document could be used to institutionalize any aspect of the budget adoption process and/or impose requirements around balanced budget reserves and procedures. And I think if that's something that my colleagues would agree, we could pursue a little more. I think we do a very good job. And you further, you go on to say that if that became approved in a charter, then it would be permanent and subject to only change only by the vote of the people. So that, you know, if we really do think we do that well and that would serve us well, and it seems to me as the course of the city, how we do our budgeting and how we handle reserves and how we are fiscally prudent, that that would be something that we might look at again as we're contemplating this possibility.
Mr. Kristoff?
Really not a lot of comments. I mean, I listened to what Carlos said and this and that, and, you know, I'm from Bright. I was born and raised there. Oscar was born and raised there. He's Latino. He represented us on the council. Ray Jones lived over there. Carolyn, she, I don't really, I think she was raised there, but then she moved out. But then Mark Monamir. I think the voters have chosen well. They have looked at whomever the candidates are, and I think that they have really thought about who they want to vote for. They want to vote for qualified candidates. They want to vote for people that have worked in the schools, that have developed the relationships that are necessary. I worked at a post office over there, and so I developed the relationships with people so they got to know me. And I think that that's really the key. The key is finding the qualified candidate to represent whatever you want. It doesn't necessarily mean that just because that person is from the Broderick area that they are not qualified or that they are going to vote completely one way. They have to vote for the entirety of the whole city, and that's what really makes it, that makes it better. I mean, I think that, quite frankly, I think we've all, and in past councils up there, I think we've all made some very, very good decisions. And I think that the electorate has seen that, and that is what has perpetuated, you know, the votes. And so, you know, it's just that, I think I understand your issue, but at the same time, I think that if you look at our city, we've had, we've had a woman mayor, a woman mayor pro tems a couple of different times. And so I think that we've had, you know, Latino people that are on the council. I think we've had the most diverse council of any councils I can possibly think of. And so I think that we've done a pretty decent job, and I think that reflects in the votes that we get when we run elections in November. So, anyway.
I may, Mr. Mayor. Just one more item on something to contemplate for all of us, though, is the principle that I articulated a little earlier, is that things will change again for the city and the population. There is, I said put the ten-year mark, but I think the SecoG blueprint passes in 2050 at population amount, is that, I want to say a hundred? Is that right? Twenty fifty? A hundred thousand? Maybe more. And it's happening, it'll happen in all parts of the city, primarily in the area probably we're sitting in now, in the downtown riverfront, Broderick neighborhoods. They're already, we're already investing in that area, preparing for that growth. And I think the thing that the charter piece brings to me is, and a legacy probably for at least me, is to make sure we're open to changing that. And can we use the charter to do that? Can we use the charter to get in ten years at the next census to make sure the council reviews where they are from election cycle, to make sure that we remain responsive? I do agree with the mayor, that moving to the November timeframe, because participation in elections is the most foundational thing to ask in an election, to make sure everyone participates. And we do that. But we'd also need the opportunity, and councils should be responsive to the changing nature of it. So we may want to consider that in terms of if the population dynamics change, and they are, they're going to. And that involves not just economic status, but ethnicity as well as age, as boomers move on and then millennials grow in and the next generation comes in. All those things will occur, and ethnicity is part of that. So I think we need to be able to think about, are there trigger points to understand that growth? The analogy I used the other day in thinking about, and I'm looking at Charlene because she knows this better than I do, but on the planning commission, we do that all the time in how we create infrastructure. We did it on Lake Washington Boulevard. We didn't, you know, we planned for a four-lane road, but we didn't put in a four-lane road because we only need two. But we had trigger points, right? That at some point, we're going to have to make sure we plan for that. And it's a similar way, this is a basic part of our infrastructure. I think we need to be responsive, and future councils need to be, understand that this is important to us. It's important to the community that we're always looking to adapt and are always looking to ensure that the voters feel as though, and we have the opportunity to look at, making sure we are electing folks with the current population, whatever that may be. So we may want to think about that and go into a trigger point, to after the census, we review election cycles. And that way, that way, these conversations happen, and we ensure ourselves that it happens. If it's this codified, we'll walk away. The only one I won't move too much on is the November timeframe, just in terms of, do we want to go to a primary? I think that's a great question. What I would argue against that for is what Mr. Johansson brought up, is cost. It's costly to run an election, and that's the unfortunate, I wish we could address that in our, in this charter. But the other part is just if we wanted to move it, have a way to evaluate those election cycles in future years. I think that's something we should consider.
Yeah, I agree. Part of this process, and even this discussion, is just to me a reminder, I mean, this whole sense that geography is not everything, that in, just looking at the voting patterns for that other analysis, for example, if you didn't know, I mean, if you didn't, if they weren't laid out on a map, the voting patterns in the rivers are far, far, far more like they are in Brideway Island, in Bridway Lakes than they are the immediately adjacent precincts in Broderick. That's not surprising, given the demographics, the relative newness of many of the residents of that neighborhood to the community itself, differences in wealth and ethnicity and everything else. So it's not a big surprise, but the geography itself is not the marker there. At the same time, you know, folks who are inhabiting the city, you know, they're particularly interested, you know, there's, you know, the folks who care a lot about biking, and they're not geographically concentrated. But the way that they organize their interaction with the city, the way they might care about what their biggest issues are, might revolve on that common mode of getting around or that common avocation, or, you know, families with kids, regardless of where they are in the community, have common interests and needs. And I think we sometimes can lose that and lose the ability for those views and perspectives to really be heard in government when we divide everything up just based on where your house lands. And so it was, the ranked choice voting stuff, I had, we had that. When I was a student at Berkeley, and I ran for student body vice president, we had ranked choice voting. It was fun mathematically, but it was a pain in the neck, although we didn't have computers then that could do it. So I get how silly it can seem and how complicated it is, but that is one advantage of it, is that it doesn't force us to segment ourselves solely by geography. It does allow us to coalesce and to have views and perspectives collectively that can parse in ways that aren't just geographic, but that reflect other interests and demographics and needs. And so I still think that's worth looking at, even though most, the college student in me is still saying that's, I don't want to go there, but, you know, just as a potential solution to some of the issues that we've described. We didn't talk about campaigns at all or the elections themselves, and so just to raise two other issues, which is not in the report, and the Idaho Committee didn't take it up. We've had an enduring issue about the running of our elections by Yolo County and whether or not we could run our own elections and possibly get results quicker than seven weeks after the polls close and all that. So this is an empirical question or legal question, as a charter study, we have the ability to operate our own elections or not. And then the second is on the campaign finance reporting and that sort of thing. There's been an ongoing interest in, you know, by, you know, good government advocates, and sometimes council questions about, could we have a system of real-time campaign finance reporting? Maybe that's just a technical question and not a legal question, but I'd be curious, you know, if, as a five-minute question, you know, in New York City Clerk's work group or the city attorneys, whether or not the charter provides, a charter provides any different ways of providing more modern, more transparent, more real-time information around not just elections, but also gift reporting and, you know, all the other stuff that we file, that the public has a right to see but never asked to look at because it's so hard to find. So whether there's a, whether, you know, the tools that might be open to us might be slightly more open. So, all right, have we exhausted this item? Thanks so much. Thanks, Mr. Robinson. This was a big hairy one. Thanks to the folks who provided some comments and input, and certainly to the council, that was a really, you know, rich discussion of at least some areas to explore. All right. Now we're going to proceed to consent agenda. Consent agenda is items six through nineteen. We have a recommendation from the city manager for a revised version of Agenda Item Nine. That's just simply a revised version of the resolution that Agenda Item Nine proposes. So we have that. Are there any others the members of the council wishes to remove or any other for separate question or comment?
Six.
Okay, all right. So item six is consideration of annual report regarding developer impact fees for fiscal year 2014-15. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Paul, Phil? All right, Phil.
I think I know your question. If it's a technical question, then I'll bring Paul up.
We've gone over it. I mean, I think that it's, I think that it is a stretch to use the in lieu of fees that were collected for flood control projects to not go to levy improvements, but instead go to some roadway improvements. I realize there is a, I think there is a nexus between ingress egress out of a flood area. I think there's a nexus between taking South River Road off of the levy and moving it down, and yet at the same time, I think that by using in lieu of fees monies that this study said we're supposed to go to levies and not the roadways and not the other things, that we should put those monies into the levy system. And it seems like we haven't done that. We've used that for Southport Parkway or Village Parkway. And I have some concern with that.
So with regard, you've identified a couple of the issues that obviously have been discussed at council. When Village Parkway, when the flood project for Southport was moving the levy and taking the road off the levy, obviously there has to be egress to get people out and ingress to get our police and safety people in. So from that point on, the project was looked at as a transportation project, but also a flood project. Probably more importantly, to answer your question, is in order to be able to do this project, we had to piece together money from multiple sources. We had a grant of 2.5 million, but in order to make that grant work, as we typically do here, we had to use 2.8 million dollars from Fund 106, the Community Investment Fund, which is not normally used for that as a loan, which we hope to be paid back with future traffic impact fees. We used the traffic impact fees we had, 1.5 million. We used 250,000 of water enterprise funds in order to connect the water, and we needed the million dollars that we used of flood in lieu fees. So it was really a question of, we're moving the road off of the levy, there has to be a way in and out. We have a grant. We have to see how we put the money together in order to keep the people safe, being able to get out and get in, and we use multiple sources. If the traffic impact fees come in, you know, eventually, the council certainly could pay back the flood in lieu fees, that would be a council decision. But this was brought to the council as part of the CIP in the right year, 2014, and was approved, and was in our last CIP as well. So it was the way we had to cobble together money, basically, to fund a project that needed to be funded in order to be able to do the levy project and still keep the citizens safe. That was...
I guess my take on this would be that that 1.2 million dollars should be back in the levies. And if there are road funds or if there are other kinds of monies to be cobbled together, then they could go towards Village Parkway or some other infrastructure project that doesn't really affect the levy system. So, you know, I just throw this out to the council because, I mean, you know, I think we've overreached a little bit, and it's like taking, if we were to have taken money from the streetcar to put into something else, you know, people would have some concerns because that's what that money was set to do. And so I think that this in lieu of fee, as far as flood control is concerned, I think those dollars, if we're going to say that this is what the in lieu of fee is for, then that's what it should be for, and doesn't get siphoned off into other kinds of projects. I just don't think those other projects are... I just don't think those other projects are as important as construction of that levy. That's probably where I'm really drawing my.
I think it's the right, it's the right question that we're, to be asking and the right issue to be raising. I do, I mean, that we have, we actually have taken money from Streetcar and the Light Road Fund and when we've needed it, you know, okay, we just got state or federal money or state money to do the, you know, High Street Bridge levy improvement, and we'll lose that money if we don't, if we don't find some way to match it right now, you know, by Thursday, then we'll lose it. And so we feel, okay, well, where can we, what funds can we get some money, some money out of in order to make sure we don't lose that money because we don't have enough money in the flood fee, flood fund at that moment? And so we did exactly, we've done exactly that for all of our projects at one point or another. And I think in this particular case, if I'm, you may have just mentioned this, but that, I mean, this has been deemed as part of the flood project, not just by us, but by the, by our, by DWR as well, is, I mean, it's part of, it's part of the, of the, of the Southport project, which was of financial benefit to us because it means it can be scored against, you know, against their contribution, ultimately against our, and potentially against our federal match obligation as well. And so it's been a means for us to advance the whole flood project in the way that it's defined by our flood project partners and also, you know, bring a net amount of additional money into city projects. So, I mean, it's, it is the right question, but I think in this case, it has been, it has made sense.
Well, the problem is, is with that, is I don't know where, if 1.1 million dollars is taken off of the levy or taken away from the levy project, I don't know where we are going or how we are going to backfill that. I know how we're going to do it with Streetcar and some other areas, but I'm just not sure of how I get that backfilled so that I know that I'm going to be able to complete that levy because that is, in my opinion, the top priority that the city has is flood protection and keeping the people safe.
The Finance Division is comfortable, Councilman Kristof, that we will get you the 1.1 million if that's, you know, to get that flood project. We know that it's, the council's number one agenda item, we know it's the floods, and we will get you that money. We needed the 1 million dollars to get Village Parkway North. We made that, just the council, we made that recommendation to council and.
All right. So if you come back and say we're all, we could do the half a billion dollar flood project except for 1.1 million dollars short, city manager is going to be in big trouble.
Okay. I won't let that happen. My boss, I won't let that happen.
All right. Okay, thank you. Item, item nine is a revised one. Item 12 is consideration of contract with Vigilant Solutions for the acquisition of license plate readers for the police department. And, oh, I have this item. So this, this is one of those, I support the item, we ought to be using the right technology, sensing technology. We need, we do need to start evolving a policy framework around these issues. And this is, this one's not novel, we're not, we're not the first ones to have license plate readers, we won't be the first one to have facial recognition software, but it, but we can't just ad hoc what our, what our, what our general policy commitments are to our citizens around privacy, use of data, access to data like this. It isn't enough just that we only have a certain number of licenses, so it's not like 100 people will be looking at the information, I think it's 100 people looking at the information, but we need to have a adopted policy about, okay, who can and under what circumstances is going to have access to this data and how are we going to be able to assure citizens that their, that their private data is secure and not subject to, you know, to inappropriate use or abuse. And so I'm supportive of doing this, but we concurrently, not just about this, but in general terms, as our ability to track, monitor, and identify citizens consistently improves as a result of technology, we do, we need to have a framework for how we're assuring their protections as well.
Okay, well Sergeant Winger is here to talk about the details of this, but in terms of that overall policy, we can come back to the, to the council on that.
Okay. All right. Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, Sergeant. All right. Item 15 is consideration of authorizing staff to submit grant funding applications for the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. No questions about this, I'm just, I'm really glad to see this. This is, you know, the first, the first of a thousand steps that will need to be taken if we have a hope of being able to achieve the dream of having something akin to a High Line or a new public use that is of, you know, that brings, you know, something really special to the riverfront and connectivity and a destination and this, so if we're, we're really glad that staff's identified and put together the application to, to get this first level of grant. This is, you know, this is a really complicated, it's a simple project in some sense, since the bridge is already there, there's a deck, you do some stuff to it, but we don't own it, the ramps up to the bridge are going away, I mean, there's a lot of reasons, a lot of obstacles along the way, but we don't, we won't get there if we don't get started. And so this, I'm really pleased to see that this is being taken. Okay, item 16 is consideration of Resolution 15-64, adopting the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail, Sycamore Trail, and Riverwalk Trail into the Great California Delta Trail.
Yes, and I don't, thank you. And there, I don't really, well, there is a little bit of a question on this, but there's no, first of all, there's no cost to this, we're just basically just taking existing systems and we're not changing the names of, we're just, everybody's getting used to the Clarksburg Branch Trail or Sycamore Trail, but there is part of a greater, larger framework of trail systems, is that correct?
That is correct. There is no cost to us to do this. Actually, the Delta Protection Commission will be installing signs of their own on our existing sign poles that specify that it will be part of the, that our current trails will be part of the Greater California Delta Trail. And we are maintaining our own names for all the trail systems that are going to be brought in and future ones.
Okay. And so, and we're, and future ones is the next question is, I think this is terrific. I know we articulated this at some point in this past summer, that the opportunities here, especially opportunities we have in some of the parkway areas and linear parks, we have contemplating coming with even the flood control projects. This is a terrific opportunity and the more, hopefully it'll, well, this kind of feed on itself that will, it'll spur us to find other uses of these spaces and bring it in. So I just want to give you kudos for, the city for kudos for following through on this. Thank you.
It's great stuff. I'll make sure that Chamber and the Visitors Bureau and others are aware in that, a long time ago, we had a, you know, an objective of branding, you know, one, one brand of the community of West Sacramento being the gateway to the Great California Delta, and we are where the delta begins. And, but this, this trail system, it gives a way to bring some physical form to that. And so our partners outside of City Hall and the Delta Commission, we ought to make sure they're aware so that they can take advantage of that and start to use that in their promotions and their materials and their programings.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right. So that concludes all the questions and comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Mr. Johansson moves and Alper Tamsin Dean moved, seconds, that the consent agenda be adopted with that modification to item nine. Single further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on that motion carries. Item 20, which is a long item about tax refunding of bonds, and the city manager is requesting that we continue the public hearing instead to January 13th, 2016. Without objection, that'll be the order. Item 21 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 15-48, renaming the two segments of South River Road and Southport and the segment of South River Road and Pioneer Bluff. Mr. Tilly, Mr. Laffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be, I'll be doing the primary presentation for you this evening, and then Mr. Laffey, who has done the bulk of the work on this project, will also be able to contribute to the presentation and your questions as needed. Renaming of some of these segments on South River Road that are before you tonight have been before the council at various times previously, originally some portions of South River Road just north of Pioneer Bluff in the Bridge District were renamed to Fifth Street as part of the Bridge District specific plan efforts back in 2009, and when it's also in the intent to rename the remaining portions of South River Road was established. The council, back in October 2014, actually formally initiated renaming South River Road and Pioneer Bluff at the time that the portion in Southport that later became Locks Drive was also under consideration. It was not implemented at that time because of the required property owner notification pursuant to our street naming policy had not been occurred. And so this item was brought back to the council this past October, along with two segments of South River Road and Southport for formal initiation by the council. At the October workshops, staff did ask, was asked by council to review some options related to property owners on South River Road to help try to minimize the disruption of changing all of their, their street addresses. We have worked through the post office and confirmed with the postmaster that they will allow what they refer to as ghosting on South River Road, which would allow existing businesses to maintain their mailing addresses, even though the actual physical site address would change to Fifth Street if that were the council's ultimate decision. New businesses, as they come in, would go to Fifth, go to a Fifth Street address according to the postmaster, but existing businesses would retain a South River Road mailing address. As part of this item, staff did provide notice to affected property owners in accordance with the street naming policy, and we also provided notice to business owners and to the property itself to try to make sure we are reaching all parties through one means or another. We have not received any comments directly to us at Community Development Department, and according to some of our assessment of city business license records, some of the properties and business owners already use a PO box, you know, rather than a South River Road address. With respect to the two segments in Southport, staff did communicate with the Historic Society after the last council meeting, and we were actually approached by Mr. Finocchio after the last meeting, who suggested the concept of chicory, which we did research further and then got some further communications with the Historic Society, and hence chicory, which is a coffee product, had been grown in this area and, you know, in the 1800s, and it seemed to be an appropriate historic designation in keeping with the council's request for that area. So at this time, we are proposing chicory loop for that short segment of South River Road near where the marinas are located there. And the remaining proposed street names are consistent with what staff had proposed to the council previously in October. The overall objective of this is to avoid having numerous disconnected segments of South River Road, which is confusing to first responders, including our mutual aid partners. And at this point in time, staff is prepared to implement the proposed changes should the council approve them with an effective date of July 1st, which would try to coincide with the opening of Village Parkway North and Village Parkway South, which are both under construction. And so at this time, this concludes staff presentations, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at this point? All right, then we do have, oh, sorry, maybe I don't have any? Okay, we do have one request for public comment, that's by Dan Ramos, for the South River Road property owners.
Good evening, Mayor Cavaldon, members of the city council, Dan Ramos, representing, oh, sorry.
Mr. Kristof reminds me, we need to open the public hearing on this item.
Oh.
You didn't do anything, no, it's my mistake.
Okay, sorry.
Now, welcome to the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Hold that clock for a second. Anyway, thank you, Mayor Cavaldon, members of city council. Just a quick comment, I really appreciated the discussion on the charter, discussion this evening, it was very enlightening and just really appreciate your efforts on it. It was really good. So, I know that's not my subject, so I just wanted to say that, it was good. I'm here representing many of the South River Road landowners, but not, obviously the city's one of them, I'm not representing the city here tonight, but mainly I get my uncle, my cousins, Ramos Oil and Clark Pacific, Dick Cunha, and of course, our own properties from the Frank Ramos family. And anyway, I kind of drew the short straw today, and I'm not here, there's a little issue with noticing, and I'm not here to really kind of complain, I think it's mainly our fault, some of us, meaning myself, I was out of town in the earlier discussion, both in September and October, should have been here then discussing this, but just what we want to state, that we're here to respectfully request that you consider on your alternatives two, three, or four. And basically, completely understand what's going on in Southport with the levy and the chicory thing, appreciate Don's efforts on that. This is the last segment of South River Road, so we're not, no longer segmented, this will be it, this is one stretch there. Many of these businesses have been here for over 65 years, and they do rely on that address for a lot of their customers to come and go. And we realize this area is transitioning, we've been working closely with you, we're on board, we're supporting that effort, stuff like that, but we just, until that transition takes place, we'd love to be able to keep the name for the time being. It's got actually quite a bit of historical nature, this particular street, some of these businesses have been, have probably been the most active in terms of economic impact for the city over the last 60 years of any street in this community. So it's almost a historical significance. We kind of like the old name of South River Road, realize there's a transition, so, you know, hopefully someday maybe become Pioneer Bluff Boulevard or something like that, understand that, that's, that makes sense when the transition occurs. But we're just asking, respectfully asking at this point in time, if we can keep the South River Road name there until the appropriate time when the area transitions, and take a look at it then again when, when basically we're out of there, and in the meantime, we can keep the South River Road, we think it has good historical significance. I've been around, I was around when we did the Bridge District naming, we went through all this, was there when Charlene came up with the great name of the Bridge District, and we started talking, actually, that's why the Bridge Street is right there off the on-ramp, off-ramp of Interstate 50 there, and that sign up there was supposed to be signed at the Caltrans, to the Bridge Street. That was the whole concept behind it, didn't happen, I don't know why, but it was, we just don't like the name Fifth Street either, it just doesn't, doesn't do anything for us. So I'm, I ran out of time, you know, Fifth Street denotes where Fourth and Third is, so if we can kind of delay things and keep working with staff, we're not trying to be uncooperative here, but that's it, thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. It's a public hearing, does anyone else wish to address the council on this item? I see none, or close the public hearing and return to the council. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'm just going through, it doesn't seem like there's really any, I mean, in terms of the Loop Road and the cul-de-sac, looks like staff has done a good job at outreach there. It looks like on this Pioneer Bluff section, though, it does, I mean, there's at least one person that's spoken, and we also have an email from Tom Lewis from the Historical Society, who reminds us that the South River Road originally in the historic Washington Township area, and it may be an idea just to defer, I mean, if there's no, I don't think there's any urgency in renaming these now, what would be the harm in not addressing this particular segment at this time and maybe looking at some of these other issues a little more closely?
We brought it forth this time to allow for, you know, time to people to adapt to the transition, as that would, you know, if we were to act to say that would give us, you know, six months to, you know, prepare, help remind folks in South River Road. If we defer this action, then we may have less time if we do it later, but there certainly isn't anything that says it absolutely positively has to be done tonight or else.
Yeah, because, I mean, the transition is happening, but it's, it's going to be happening for a while, too, over, you know, a number of years, so it doesn't seem to be a real urgency at this point.
And if we would, we would end up, wind up with two segments of South River Road that will remain being a segment at the very southern end of town at Gregory, south to our city limits in addition to this segment, but otherwise, you know, if we remove the ones in the middle, then that, that helps.
Yeah, I think your description of the urgency is right, there's, I mean, if we don't do it tonight, it's not, nobody's, nobody's, nobody's going to die. I mean, we, but we had this, I mean, we started this a year ago, or a little over a year ago, and said, why don't we take a little more time to think this through and to consult? The transition is already underway, I mean, I think we're, you know, it would not be surprising if several properties turned over in the next six months. And what we, what, so to me, the urgency is, I don't want those properties then to start ordering stationary and making all of their investments in that, in that name again. So the ghosting issue, I thought was the one way to solve that, I mean, I've certainly been in plenty of other cities where it's like 67th Street and Martin Luther King Boulevard at the same time, or Caesar Chavez Boulevard. There's got to be a way that can allow for the two, the two times to exist simultaneously for some period of time. And ghosting seemed, doesn't seem quite that, because you would, I mean, you would, it's just that the postal service would have some, you know, dusty, you know, record that it used to be called South River Road, but nobody else would know that. that it used to be called South River Road, but nobody else would know that. So I don't, I don't know if that's as far as we can go on dual naming, it's just the, that kind of the, the private ghosting that the, that the postal service would have, or can, is it possible to have two names, two actual names at this, during some period of time?
You know, that certainly may be, may be possible, and so far, while we've looked into this, that has at least not been, been favorable from some of the other city departments and that we have, you know, consulted with on this, but we, we did, once the post office came in on the ghosting, you know, we did, you know, sort of run with that, it seemed to be a good compromise, because it, you know, dealt with the disruption issue, but then allowed, still allowed for the, the transition to continue, you know, as properties turn over.
Okay, well, the, all right, I know there's some other views and ideas and perspectives on, on that, that dimension. The actual name, the long-term name to me, I'm, I'm still very supportive of Fifth Street. Not, not, not every street is anchored totally in its his, in its history and all that, I mean, and Fifth Street, we have a, each, at least for, for, you know, the way I, I see the city evolving and developing is each neighborhood is gonna have, you know, historically suited where, where that's right, or not historically, where it's, where it's brand new, but connected by some key spines and arteries in the city that are common, and that reinforce that we are one city. Jefferson is, almost gets there, if it would go a little north, Cagle, and Fifth Street is, it, the reason why we named it Fifth Street in the Bridge District, over the objection of the property owners who wanted some, you know, some fancy development name that could be featured on South Park, we picked Fifth Street for the precise reason of creating the linkage to Broderick and the Washington Neighborhood with the intention of creating a, a line through so that there was not the sense that these are different, these are completely different places that just happen to be in one city, but they are linked together by some, some core arteries, and so that, to me, I, I still think Fifth Street is the right long-term name, I, I mean, I don't, I certainly don't need to, you know, make the change tomorrow, that's, I mean, there's, it's not, it's not urgent, but I do think it is the right, the right, the right thing to do in terms of the coherence and the cohesion of, of our, of our city and the sense of common, of, of commonplace. One thing I would say just about names generally, and, 'cause, 'cause I think we've been, as staff has been generating names in these instances, chicory and birchwood are good examples, those are relatively safe, we're, we're picking animals and, and food products and stuff like that, and I, and I do worry we're losing any sense of people, right, the, I mean, the, the history of the, of the northern part of the city in particular, you know, where, you know, every street practically is either a number, or more, more likely it's Elder, or Douglas, or Ruder, or it's a person, and it, and it causes you, if you live there, at some point in your life, you ask your mom or grandfather, or you look in the library, what, what is, how do you, how do you pronounce Ruder, and where did that come from? Tell me a little bit about the history of my place, and you don't get that with, you know, just, you know, endless, endless versions of trees, and so I, you know, we, we need, we, we ought to have a mix of, of names, and it's a challenge because when we, when we do this and we do it in, in the moment, and maybe, we used to ask the Parks Commission, and it would end up being, you know, some random person, or the Historical Society, but just like in the moment, that, that didn't work out very well. But I wonder, and this is partly building on, on Mayor Protem Sandin's admonition over many times when we've thought about naming, naming streets or facilities after folks who've recently, recently died in our community, but who have been, made significant contributions, if we simply created a, essentially a bucket in, into which we added names over time, so when Steve Marshke passes away, or, or Toby Ross completes his, his decade of service as city manager, that they, you know, they enter into a, into a, into, you know, a, a database that staff then, staff in consult, in consultation with property owners and with the Historical Society and with neighborhood groups can have, you know, at least a bank of, of individuals that are contributing or have contributed 100 or 50 years or five weeks ago to, you know, to the evolution and the creation and the, and improvement of our community, that it would give us, it would give us the, more of a chance for humanity and history, people history to be reflected in, in our facilities as well. So I, I support these names, it makes sense, I love the, the chicory stuff and, you know, the history of that, and its distinctiveness is fantastic, so this, it's not a criticism at all of these, but, but simply a, a hope that we might find a way to, to honor and to bring in the history of the people of West Sacramento into, into our names as a way to remind us of their, of, you know, of, of who's brought us, who's brought us here over time, so. Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Cavalden, I actually think that's a wonderful idea for the future. I, I wanted to commend staff for working with the Historical Society, and I learned about the, I didn't know that we had these, these chicory history, so I, I learned something from, from that naming process. I, I do want to say that I, I, I think if there's a way that it would be possible to dual name the South River Road segment with Fifth Street, I think that would be a, a good solution, even if it was for some, some period of time, a decade, or whatever, whatever seems reasonable. I did bring up, when we were looking at the extension of the Mike McGowan Bridge, I brought up my concerns about those, those business owners along that segment of South River Road, because they, they're some of the, the oldest businesses that exist here, and so, and I drive that, I drive that segment now fairly regularly, and you can even see the old, kind of the old-fashioned signs that say, say, "South River Road," so I, I think if there is something that can be done, and again, perhaps it's time limited, I, I had asked at that time if there, I think I had asked if there'd been outreach to the, to the chamber and the business owners, and I, I, I don't know what else, what other kind of input we've received from that segment, but I, I would agree, if it's reasonable to do dual naming, because I also do understand the long-term vision is the, I think the Fifth Street idea is, is right, it is like a Jefferson kind of road for us, but I do want to honor the folks who've been, who've committed to us to have their businesses here for a long period of time.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I'm just gonna agree with Mayor Protem Sandin on this, if we can find a way to do it, to co-naming or whatever it is, allow the businesses that transition, and as much as, I'll get, I'll ask Mr. Ramos to make sure the business owners, please stay involved, it's, honestly, it's kind of shocking, shocking to me today, hit a call that you guys weren't aware that this was coming up, so we're gonna take some of that blame, too, and we, we need to be working, there should be conversation about this, there should be no surprises at, an outcome on this one, so I ask staff as well to make sure we're talking to them, and I, I'm in agreement, the Fifth Street's a long-term answer, and, and my, my view, and, but we understand the transition, the nature of the transition, and I'm, I'm very supportive of that, how we go about that to that place, but we should be talking about this and making sure we get to a common solution, and we're all good with it when we do take action on it.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, I, I too. Sort of side with what Danny, Mr. Ramos has said. This road has been here for a long, long time, and it has always been South River Road, and I think that the businesses that have located along there, they've invested a lot in stationary, business cards, addresses, and all the other kinds of things that, you know, the business people do, and I would really sort of hate to put some kind of impediment on those businesses. They've been here a long time, there's some major, major businesses that are located there, and I, I think that South River Road is, it's important to them, and since it's important to them, and we always try to do everything we can for small business owners and everything, I mean, and this is something that I think heads down that same path, so I would keep it at South River Road.
All right, so we, I don't know that we, with respect to the resolution, it doesn't sound like we can make an, take an action on the South River Road, Fifth Street component at this stage, we need to know more about dual naming options and that sort of thing that we've, that we've discussed, didn't, I, I don't, it didn't appear that ghosting is a sufficient, is a sufficient solution to that problem, so unless you have a, another, another solution that might be available to us right at the moment, we may have to take action on the resolution without that segment.
I think that would be most appropriate, I, I think there was an issue raised with public safety as well, having Fifth Street, South River Road, Village Parkway in the same area, and then have a, later on, a few miles further south, another South River Road, so we'd like a chance to take a look at that from a public safety standpoint and come back.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, I think, you know, the council, for the most part, has, has heard that message, and we've, we've been signaling for a year that we want to go in that, in that direction, so I, I don't know that, that so much you need to, we need more information about, you don't need to make more of a case about it, I just think finding the right solution that will solve that and, and allow the current property owners to, to, you know, to, to continue to do business is, is the, is the key.
Okay. Beyond ghost, beyond the ghost address.
I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm hearing, and I'm not disagreeing, that the ghosting is not, is, is not sufficient, unless, unless there's more to the ghosting than we, than we know, but the way you've described ghosting, which is that everything says Fifth Street, but somewhere deep in the bowels of the postal service, the, the system recognizes that that actually can also mean South River Road, that's probably not sufficient.
Okay. Okay, so, is there a motion on the resolution with the deletion of the South River Road segment?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Mr. City Attorney?
Can we just clarify the deletion of the South River Road portion that's in the Pioneer Bluff area?
Yes, oh, yes, thank you. Okay, so with that clarification, all those that favorably say aye? Aye. Any opposed, hear none, that motion carries, thank you. Brings us to item 22, which is Consideration of Resolution 15-69 Accepting the Broadway Bridge Feasibility Study with a Recommendation to Proceed with the Project Approval and Environmental Documentation Phase of the Broadway Bridge Project. You have a memo at the desk from the city manager with a revised resolution and additional agreement, and also a, I think, a revised version of the agenda report itself, or perhaps that just incorporates those, those new documents that are at your desk. All right, Mr. McCoy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and I'm Mr. Johnson. The public bridge feasibility study, you've seen it's coming close to wrapping up, the Broadway Bridge feasibility study, and I think that all these milestones, like you described, and this go through work, as well as meeting the schedule of bringing this before the council to review the findings of the feasibility study, and to request vote of acceptance of the study and authorization to proceed with subsequent, excuse me.
There we go, is that better? There we go, thank you. And proceed with subsequent project approval and environmental documentation phase of the project. Provided with the agenda report to council is the grant agreement as well, that's between the Federal Highway Administration, Caltrans, and the city of West Sacramento, that's for the Tiger Discretionary Grant Funds and the amount of $1.5 million that was awarded to the city of West Sacramento, it was applied for in 2014 to complete the PAED phase, Project Approval and Environmental Documentation Phase. The local FHWA administrator has just recently received authorization from the U.S. Department of Transportation and provided this to staff, and we request that the council authorize the mayor to execute this grant agreement as part of Resolution 15-69. On the screen, you'll see the slide that identifies the feasibility study objectives that have been met for this project, as well as the objectives for the subsequent PAED phase. Supporting technical memos within the feasibility study identify the alignment and approach alternatives, feasible bridge types based on local policies and state and federal requirements, and identify the process of collecting stakeholder feedback, as well as providing the basis for commencing the environmental process. Also on the screen is the PAED phase, which is the subsequent phase for the project that actually moves the feasibility study findings into a more advanced technical analysis, as well as environmental analysis, and will also be looking to come up with a preferred In the feasibility study, we've got a total of four primary alignments, a total of five alignments if you include the two subsegments of Alignment C. All of these alignments represent a range of the northernmost to the southernmost alignments, from A being the northernmost to D being the southernmost alignment, all of which have been determined to be feasible in the feasibility study. Each of these maintain the U.S. Coast Guard's required 170-foot navigation span, as well as require a movable span according to USCG regulations. We also analyzed the Fifth and, and South River Road, Fifth Street slash South River Road connection alternatives, and X Street and Broadway alternative circulation on the Sacramento side. The east-west connections for all the alignments represent either on the West Sacramento side going directly into 15th Street or directly into South River Road slash Fifth Street. We've also got on the Sacramento side connections that go directly into Broadway, but we also are investigating, looking at an X Street direct connection or a Broadway direct connection. Each of these have specific implications with regard to the traffic analysis, which was included in the feasibility study and was presented earlier to the city council. We also presented at the last meeting, bridge type alternatives, bridge, bridge, excuse me, bridge section alternatives. We have updated this per the comments of city council, specifically with regard to the two-to-four lane conversion. Comments that we received at the prior city council meeting were that we wanted to see as much emphasis on the bike and ped facilities for the four-lane conversion as was represented in the other bridge section alternatives. So what we did was expanded the two-to-four lane conversion section to include two-foot buffers for the bike lanes on both the two or four lane. In doing so, we maintained the bike and ped, bike and ped emphasis. This next slide shows the standard four lane, which has not changed from the last meeting. This represents either a four-lane, which is usable by both vehicles and transit, or a four-lane which has two dedicated transit-only lanes. This represents the cost estimate for the project, this is new, we went ahead and took a look at all of the lane configurations or the bridge widths with regard to each of the individual alignments, and then costed those out for a year of expenditure, which for the purposes of this feasibility study is the year 2025. The SAICOG-approved M-Tip has a total of $254,500,000 assigned, assuming completion of year in year 2026, so each of these cost estimates are, as you'll see from here, the $250 million mark is pretty much centered to this cost estimate, so we're running a range of both below that estimated cost and above those estimated costs, depending on the alignment and depending on the lane configuration that you choose. So all of this will be looked at further in the subsequent PAED phase, once we start selecting preferred alternatives, we can actually understand what the costs are associated with each of, each of those alternatives. For the project development process timeline, you'll see here we've completed the Broadway Bridge feasibility study on time and in budget. The next phase, PAED, is running approximately two years, we will be looking to kick off that process by spring next year, and that'll be running all the way through till the spring or summer of 2018. During that time, we'll be looking to submit a grant to start the next phase, the PSNE phase, project specifications, to keep the project moving. Not only am I here to answer questions, but also we have Jesse Gotham from the city of Sacramento in the audience, and we also have Mike Higgins from CH2M, who's the consulting project manager, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
2026 seems like it's a long ways away.
Not if you've been here since 1987.
That's not that far. Mr. Ledesma?
Thanks, Jason, for the update and, and looking at the feasibility, I did have a question, excuse me, it's my, in, in alignment B, it talks, can you just expand a little bit upon, it, it talks about the reconfiguration of 15th Street, and matches what we're planning on the transition, transition plan, and you probably brought this up in a previous, in the previous discussion.
the previous discussion about that 15th Street. Can you just kind of expand upon the thought process there, what would you expect?
Sure. There's, there's actually two primary connections in West Sacramento. So, one is a direct connection with 15th Street from Broadway Bridge. The other is directly connecting to Fifth Street, South River Road. That's represented in Alignment D and C. Alignment B could, goes directly into 15th Street as an option. So, we have the ability in the next phase to actually take a look at what the implications are from a traffic perspective of going directly into 15th Street versus going into Fifth Street. The implications that we've studied thus far show that when you have a direct tie into 15th Street, primarily most of the traffic will want to use Jefferson to head south into the Southport area. A lot of our traffic has shown that the, the majority of the people are looking to go from Southport to downtown, and from downtown back to Southport. So, when you have a direct connection into Fifth Street, or South River Road, you'll have a split in the traffic between people opting to go slightly north to 15th Street, and then take Jefferson, or just go straight south to, down South River Road, connecting to Village Parkway ultimately. So, that, those are the two main configurations you have on the West Sacramento side.
But you also articulate, and I'm sorry, maybe more clearly, you discuss the realignment of 15th Street in I to B, and that, that's consistent with, I'm trying to find it, where it is in the, in the...
Right. Currently, we have a, there is a grant that we received, as you know, to connect Riverfront Street to 15th Street. So, as part of this project for Broadway Bridge, if we were to tie directly into 15th Street, it would require a reconfiguration of that intersection where Riverfront Street connects.
That's right, okay.
That's going to have, we, we looked at it just from a very cursory standpoint, to understand what the traffic implications are. But from a design standpoint, we haven't gotten into that, because that's more appropriate for a detailed study, which the next phase is. So, we'll be looking at those connections more closely, and we'll be understanding the impacts associated with the connection with Riverfront Street to 15th Street, and how that interfaces with Fifth, South River Road.
So, during the next phase, as we go through studying those options, I mean, we'll start to assign, I mean, you're going to, I guess the cost factor will be impacted by, by that? Or will we, will that be part of the configuration, be part of that project, or part of a different alignment with Riverfront? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. The project, the, the connection of Riverfront Street is, is ahead of this phase.
Okay.
So, we don't want to do anything that would disturb the grant work. But, we are going to have to take a look at that when we start getting into the preliminary engineering. So, yes, the answer is yes, we will need to look at it. And yes, it is going to be in this next phase, which will likely be beginning of 2017, when we really start getting into the preliminary engineering.
Okay.
But, the first part of the project, of the PANE phase, the next phase of the project, is taking a look at the alignment alternatives, and actually breaking down the alternatives that were selected in the feasibility analysis, and then carrying those forward in the study to really understand what the implications are of those. So, we'll be looking at it pretty early.
Okay. Thank you. And not disturbing the grant makes, makes sense, but also, I mean, if we have to disturb a couple million dollar grant in the name of making a $250 million project, not a $300 million project, or whatever, then, I mean, we have to have some sense of proportion as we're, as we're proceeding along those lines. The two-lane, four-lane comparisons, the, the, I have to say, the document's fairly confusing, because it will almost always start with a statement, the, the, this thing would substantially, the Broadway Bridge would substantially reduce traffic on this feature. And then, all the data that gets followed then are increases, and all the color is red. So, but the difference between two and four lanes, it looks like in virtually every one of these scenarios, increases traffic everywhere. And so, you, so you move from a two-lane bridge to a four-lane bridge on Broadway, you create more capacity for cars on Broadway. But, the number of, there's more red, thicker red on Highway 50 under that scenario, and under, on the Tower Bridge under that scenario. Where are these cars coming from?
Well, I, I want to clarify that we are looking at 2040 as the projected analysis. So, everything is going to appear to be greater anyway, because, for instance, in the analysis, right now, we're looking at about 18,000 ADT on Jefferson. But, if you look at the study, that almost doubles when you start looking at the projected 2040 scenario, just for the simple growth of the general plan, et cetera.
Sure. But, but two versus four is in the same year.
Right. Two versus four is a little bit different. There's, there's roughly a 17,000 daily trips difference between a two-lane and four-lane. So, that's probably the best way to break it out, is that in the 2040 scenario, you're looking at up to about 50,000 ADT for a four-lane bridge. And then, you're looking at, I believe, let me just double-check my figures, 32,000 daily trips for a two-lane bridge. So, the difference of that is 17,300 trips.
In the world, or on this bridge?
On this bridge.
So, my question is actually about the, the rest of the system. Because, at least, I mean, looking at the, at the, at the diagrams, it looks like that, like, with a four-lane bridge, you get that amount of increased traffic versus a two-lane bridge. So, that many car, that many more cars are on the Broadway Bridge. And, there are substantially more cars on Highway 50, under four-lane Broadway Bridge scenario, and substantially more cars on the Tower Bridge compared to a, under a four-lane Broadway versus two-lane Broadway scenario. So, there's just more cars everywhere. And I get the, the induced demand, you know, issue. But that seems, there's a lot of additional cars being immaculately conceived, to appear in every single part of the system all at once.
I would like to invite Mike Higgins up to speak to this point. But, one of the main points of Broadway Bridge that we're achieving is that the trips that are currently traveling up Jefferson to US 50, or Business 80, and then getting on the freeway, and then coming back down onto the Sacramento side, those trips specifically are going to be taking Broadway Bridge. Because, we're, we're not basically inducing the traffic there. We're pulling that from the only current connection, which is the state highway system. So, most of the vehicles that we would be pulling from there are ones that would be taking that trip anyway. But...
But, my question is, on page, on page six and seven, eight of the traffic analysis, maybe, probably, probably nine and 10 also, but in every other portion of the system, traffic volume, the red gets thicker. So, traffic volume is, is higher, even though the Broadway Bridge is supposed to be pulling, a higher-capacity Broadway Bridge should be pulling more of those trips off of the other components of the system, other, except by induced demand. But for, but for induced demand to create that much more trip seems, I'm just curious, is the analytics underneath it, so?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mike Higgins with CH2M. The, one of the common issues with those, what we call heat maps that you're looking at, is they are misleading and not, they're counterintuitive, that the red actually means a reduction in traffic, and the blue is an increase in traffic. So, it's a, it's a reverse that you would normally think of with the color coding. So, in general, the difference in travel demand between a two and a four-lane bridge is overall, the induced demand is increased with a four-lane bridge. However, the four-lane bridge draws more traffic away from those trips north of the bridge, because of the folks that are coming from the south. So, in essence, local roadways, Tower Bridge, Fifth Street to the north, Riverfront Street to the north, would all experience, Pioneer Bridge would all experience a reduction in traffic with both a two and a four-lane bridge. More of that traffic would, demand would come off of, with a four-lane bridge because of the increased use onto Broadway. So, it's counterintuitive to the colors you're seeing. But, the result is, you're actually, you have an increased benefit from reducing traffic to the north of Broadway Bridge, when you add more capacity on the bridge itself.
Okay. All right, that makes more sense. Thank you. Well, I got you, the, I'm going to go to, I have a, a little constant issue on sections of these documents that deal with stakeholder input. So, and it's almost right here. There's the, but, but as we've, city manager's sneering at me, because, because I raise the same issue with every one of these documents. But, the, the stakeholder outreach, the findings that we get from them are from individual people, members of the public here, members of the public over there. They do not represent a summative determination by the public, and which, which you actually avoid most everywhere. But, the report does indicate that, you know, at one point, reinforces the public's recommendation about incorporating multimodal design elements, and that we, we don't have a process, neither do you, for determining the recommendation of the public, only of individuals. And so, just to encourage, as we, as we do more of these documents and refinements of them, that we characterize that stakeholder input appropriately, and not overmagnify the comments of individuals at workshops into, 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 into a description of the overall view of the general public.
You're, you're referring to the, the comments, the individual comments from, from people who attended the public workshop, that we refer from, send the study?
Correct. Yeah, just to be careful not to characterize them as "the public." I mean, that they're not speaking on behalf of the entire public.
Correct.
Which is a common challenge in some of these stakeholder sections. Any questions or comments on this document? All right. Did you get all the feedback that you needed?
I believe so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Great. Oh, yeah, we are. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, so we're moving to second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to council calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Here are some dates, upcoming events that might be of interest to you. December 24th through January 1st, City Hall will be closed to the public. So, just a reminder about that. January 4th, it's not on the, the calendar in your mind, but the City School Two-by-Two will be on January 4th at 5:30 at Washington Unified School District. And, our next council meeting won't be until January 13th. Just a reminder about that.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. I just have a couple, two additions or changes. One is, the Yola Water Resources Association meeting is on the 11th of January in Woodland. And on the 14th, which is a Thursday, is the Regional Water Authority, and that meets in Citrus Heights. I know that it's two water-related meetings that same week. But, just, just so you, just so you have that background.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar? City Manager Report?
Just briefly, a couple staff announcements. A longtime employee, Art Schroeder, is going to retire at the end of this year. And then, on January 25th, Cindy Tuttle will join our staff as our Parks and Rec Director. Also wanted to mention our quarterly newsletter, our second one of this year. It's probably in the mailboxes today or tomorrow. It should be at your, your desk. And also wanted to point out, last week's hearing that the mayor participated in was Civil Works Review Board. I want to thank the mayor for participating in that, along with Congressman, Congresswoman Matt Sui, and Greg Faben, who was here, did a great job in organizing that, along with Tom Ramos from West Safka. But, that was a huge milestone for, for the FLED program.
Yeah, they did, they did a great job on the presentation, too, and not just organizing it. Greg and, Greg and Tom, and, and the congressman. It was a, it was a pretty rock-solid presentation, all, all around.
Yeah, that's a really big thing, so.
But, it was, I mean, it was a presentation of all the work that has been done, all the, all the, you know, everything that, that staff and our partners have all done. It was, it was, it was impressive. But, it was also gratifying to see the support from that, whatever that federal board was. Any questions on the City Manager Report? City Attorney Report?
Having a report.
Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda to request, so I think Mr. Joe Anderson is moving. And, Mayor Protem Sandin, second. Is that the meeting adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned.